Mayor Holman.
Yes.
It's the Council's update regarding cities' technology and the Connected City Initiative, including the status of the city's participation in the Google Fire City Checklist Process and a bunch of other stuff with it.
It's the bunch of other stuff that's really important here. So if we can try to keep this topic focused on this agenda item specifically, that would be very helpful. Jonathan?
I'm here to handle all other stuff if you need it, Jonathan.
Thank you. That's me on, okay. So, thank you very, very much, Mayor Holman, Vice Mayor Schmidt, and council members, and new council members. I'm thrilled to be here to be able to update you on our progress report on our three-year IT strategy for the city of Palo Alto. Just as a reminder, we launched this IT strategy on July 2012, so in fact, we're two and a half years into it, so we're reporting on that two and a half years. Today, we have a pretty good story to report, and I hope you'll enjoy what we have to share. But we also very much recognize that we have lots of work to do ahead of us. It's certainly not a victory dance by any means. There's plenty of work to be done, and I want to share with you that, given the limited time, we are going to be just doing a brief overview today because there's just too much to talk about. I am here with Lisa Bulger. Lisa Bulger is our IT Chief of Staff, and she will be helping me with the presentation this morning, or this afternoon, even this evening. Okay, so what we're going to cover today is just a quick preview of the sort of playing field that we're working with. We want to tell you the story about where we came from as an IT organization, when we formed it in late 2011, who we are today, and what we've done, and we want to share with you the lessons and where we are headed in the months and years ahead. I wanted to start with this picture, which really demonstrates some of the challenges that cities are facing currently, and the situation without improvement is not on a very positive trajectory globally. Today, over half the world lives in cities, over three and a half billion people for the first time, and over the next 20 to 30 years, another 2 billion people will move into cities, putting tremendous stress on existing infrastructure. And when you look at a city like, excuse me, a picture like this, you're reminded that we are facing the world with significant transportation issues, incredible overhead to infrastructure, or decaying infrastructure. You can also see what the impact is on our environment, on our poor planet, as a consequence of some of our decisions. And so this is what we see around the world, and while Palo Alto is not a city like this in India, we are a microcosm of these problems. The good news is, technology is a significant contributor as we go forward to remediating and solving some of these very, very big challenges. So what is some of that technology? Well, the first thing that we recognize is that we're using technologies that are making us a lot more social, they're connecting us in completely new ways. Today, over 1.3 billion people are on Facebook, about 900 million people connect every single day on Facebook. Using social, elections are now won all around the world, revolutions are coordinated, and, for example, this evening, snowstorms in the Northeast are being coordinated through our social computing. Technology is making all of us around the world much more connected. We're connected to each other, we're able to share ideas, but machines are becoming connected to machines, and so machines can talk to other machines and make better choices on behalf of us. And of course, it's not lost on anybody that we are producing an enormous amount of data today as a society. We are now firmly in the petabyte era, that's a one with lots of zeros. And so we're producing data that should be able to help us make much better decisions as individuals, as families, as communities, as cities, and as countries. And we should be able to make better predictions about where things are headed if we use that data really wisely. And finally, if we can find a way to bring those social computing power together with connectedness of everybody, and the enormous engine that is the data that's driving a lot of things, we can possibly make our world and our cities smarter. So for example, traffic signals can change lights when they should and not on a time basis, and people can find parking spaces without having to drive around the block 50 times. So that's just a quick overview of some big technology highlights that we see going on in our world. During the presentation today, we have a few factoids which I'd like to share with you. The first one is up on the screen right now, and that is, it's from a survey that Accenture Digital did of thousands of people on a global basis, and it was found that over 50% of people believe that their ability to interact digitally with government would encourage them to be more engaged with government. Now, what I'd like to do is hand you over to Lisa to take the next part of our presentation this morning, which is really about who we were a few years ago.
Thank you. Jonathan, Lisa Bulger, IT Chief of Staff. So who we were, as we began this journey for our IT strategy, two and a half years ago, we really had to take a hard look at who we were, identify gaps that we had within the department and any development areas. So through this process, we found four key motivations for our strategy. The first motivation was the insufficient use of innovative technologies. Here we are in the heart of the Silicon Valley, and yet, we were not deploying or using a lot of the state-of-the-art technologies that we were surrounded by. We weren't embracing those level of technologies. The second motivation was our lack of framework for prioritizing work, also identifying any of those risks, and being able to measure the value. This is not uncommon in many organizations. You'll find work is prioritized oftentimes by either first come, first served, oftentimes by who can scream the loudest, not a good way or a fair way for being able to determine what work we would be working on. A third motivation was the inconsistent delivery and quality of services. Within the department previously, oftentimes, someone may call the service desk and may receive different types of services based on the person they were actually talking with. It wasn't expected, it wasn't predictable, so the levels were often all over the charts. The fourth motivation was an aging infrastructure. This comes with increased risk over time, and as we know, old equipment often stops working. We had an antiquated phone system that was well over 20 years old, that's 20 years old. We also had cabling infrastructure that was really only sufficient for, say, the 1980s. We had to really take those things into consideration, as well as what that security looked like for these antiquated systems.
Thank you, Lisa. And so Lisa really built the motivation for how we created and derived this IT strategy, this three-year IT strategy. So I want to discuss with you the sort of, the four core legs of that strategy that emerged out of our diagnosis, analysis of our environment. And the first strategy area of the four was to deploy digital city capabilities. Now, just to be clear, this has nothing to do with the Jetsons or creating that type of world at all. This is much more rooted and grounded in our ability to provide services to our community members using the technologies that they use, whether it's online or through a smartphone or a tablet, or in fact, here at City Hall or any city building, and to do that in an efficient manner and to use Internet technologies. And we'll talk more about each of these in just a moment. The second goal was to address that issue of providing a service and a project to the city when it was needed, aligning it with actual priorities, and then measuring the value of it, and we call that IT governance. Third was to respond to our motivation that, in fact, we weren't providing standardized, consistent services to staff members and community members when they needed it. And finally, where we spend a lot of time today is upgrading that older infrastructure that we have at the city. We've come a long way, we have some ways to go, and we added, for the very first time, a real focus on a national item, which is being able to combat risks around cybersecurity. It's the number-one priority of our country, it's the number-one priority of the CIOs for each of the 50 states, and we believe that is something we have to focus on a lot, and which we do. So how did we do all this? What was the organization that we formed to produce this? Well, I want to talk about these people here briefly this morning, this evening, and so I'll talk, first of all, we formed a small group, the Office of the CIO, and that is made up of components that deal with budgeting, around data analysis, our Chief of Staff, and also for driving change and high performance. And I think we have those folks today, and what I'd like to do is just point them out. So if you're a member of the Office of the CIO, would you just raise your hand, please? There we go. Including Lisa right here, good to see you. We talked about our governance group, and we have, I believe, our governance manager here today, Ron Fong, where are you? Is Mai here? Just Ron, is Ron there? Good to see you. We have a newly promoted manager here at the city, his name is Chris Carvalho, he is managing our IT Project Services. That's Chris, and would your team put up their hand? Yeah, they're almost all here, some folks couldn't make it. We have our IT Operations Group, who keep the lights on every day, without them, nothing would really work. These are the people that just make what we do every day happen, not the new stuff that we have to add as well. So this is the IT Operations Group, run it, Darren Yamoto, Darren is right there, Darren is new to the city, welcome, and your team is, great, that's the part of the IT Operations Team for the city. I don't know who's running it right now. That's where the other half of the team is, right, up in the data center running it. We have Raj Patel, who we hired to, from Kaiser Permanente, to be our Information Security Manager, and he's right there. Raj runs a division of one, so quite the task, but he has lots of colleagues to help him and some technology to help him, too. And finally, but not least, we have our Enterprise Systems Group, who run our core system for the city, which you know as SAP, and they, some of those folks are here today, could you put your hands where? Yep, we got Kevin Cration, good to see you. And we also have GIS in this category, but I don't think our GIS guy is here. So these are all a team that makes this all happen, so thank you guys for coming tonight.
All right, we're going to switch gears a little bit, and I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the data points that we have within IT. To start things off, we run at about 11.7 million, this was last fiscal year, these were our expenses. This will include anything from contracts for maintenance and support, as well as staff salaries and benefits, in addition to all of the items it takes to keep the lights on. So this includes any refreshes, technology refreshes, and replacements. We have 32 IT staff members, and these are currently 32 people that work hard every day at maximum capacity to ensure that the needs of the city are met from a technology perspective. From three years ago, this number has gone down over the past three years, and we've continued to maintain service levels and increase the value that's actually delivered to city staff. We have approximately 300 technology solutions. These are mainly comprised of applications, online services, or systems. We don't know if 300 is the right number for our size, considering we only have 1,000, a little over 1,000 full-time employees, but we're looking at this number. In addition, we have over 400 pieces of technology equipment that support our network, as well as our servers, and we also support over 1,200 computers throughout the city. Last fiscal year, so fiscal year 14, we had 9,326 service desk tickets, to be exact. This was the number of requests for work that we received across the city from departments. This is including anything from password resets to application installations, to break fixes, to ensure that city staff can remain productive throughout their days. We, as a, from a project perspective, we completed, over the course of the two and a half years to date, we've completed 77 projects. We now, because of the strategy, have a defined definition of project, this is something that has a start and end date, usually means that it also includes over 80 hours of IT staff time. Some of the projects that are included in this completed list would be our assistance with the Tri-City CAD implementation, we worked alongside with the public safety staff to deliver that. In addition... In addition, we also had our, the Mitchell Park Library and Community Center Technology implementations, numbers of pieces of equipment that actually went into Mitchell Park. Next, we have currently 41 in-progress projects. This is anything from our cloud email migration, we also have a FIRE technology refresh in many of the engines, as well as the medic vehicles. And last, we have 27 planned projects on the horizon right now. This includes anything from our GIS assessment, to our council chambers' technology equipment replacement as well.
Great, thank you very much, Lisa, again. And so, as you can see, this is pretty data-intensive and detailed. We want to give you some examples of what we've done, and before we do that, here's another factoid. Forty-nine percent of the respondents to the Excentra Digital Survey say that digital interactions would make the government more transparent. Okay, so I'm going to start off with what we created as a vision, then a mission, and then some results. When we came up with this vision, we wanted to build something and create something that was really bold, and with your support, City Council supports city manager and the community, this is the vision that we adopted, to help support the needs of all departments in our community, to build and enable a leading digital and smart city. And that's certainly a work in progress, and we'll take some time to get to. And then, our bread and butter, the reason why we come to work every day, we're driven to provide innovative solutions to support our city departments in delivering quality services to our community, and we are laser-focused on that every single day. Okay, so an update wouldn't be complete if we didn't give you some of the results. So here's some results. By the way, in every one of these slides, the people that you're seeing in the background are members of our team, so you'll see some of our teams in action. Okay, so we'll, I'll take you through the four goals and the actual results of those four goals, beginning again with those digital city capabilities. And just as a reminder of the definition, a digital city is one that connects government, citizens, businesses, and visitors in ways that involve the Internet and a myriad of devices, providing services when people want them. And so here's some examples, just some examples, this is not comprehensive by any means. We launched Palo Alto 311 just about a year and a half ago, and whilst primarily today it's used by Public Works, the city has resolved over 2,000 service requests by community members. We only have about 1,300 users currently, but we'll go full live with Palo Alto 311 across all departments in July 2015. So we would imagine through marketing and promoting the product, the user base will grow significantly. This is another example of where we've taken what used to be just a paper document or PDF, now it's an online service, which is our enjoy activities through our community services department. And sometimes, technology is a question of life and death. We have a terrific application that was led by our FIRE colleagues, a product called Pulse Point, that lets you determine where issues are happening at the city at any time, you can use it today, as well as notifying a responder, first responder, if somebody's in need of help during a cardiac event. In fact, over the last few years, we've created, working with every department, over 50 online services for the city of Palo Alto. You will be hard-pressed to find a city of our size in the world that comes even close to that number. So we're very, very proud of the work that our colleagues at our library have done, administrative services, public safety, development services, in fact, it goes across the board, the degree to which our departments are now embracing online services. One of the areas we're particularly proud of as a city is our work on open government, making our city more accessible, more transparent, and we have today an award-winning open data portal, today hosts over 100 varied data sets. You can visit that open data portal today at data.cityofpaloalto.org. In addition, we include over five years of financial information about everything you need to know about the city that's accessible today, and includes budget and actual data. So by having this data available and creating an environment where we can explore and discover innovative services, we can have events like CityCamp, which, when I look across City Council, many of you were there, in June 2013, we hosted the world's largest outdoor civic innovation event here in Palo Alto. Over 5,000 people turned up to dance, to talk, to innovate, to hack, I don't know what else, but it was one incredible day, and it was only made possible by having a bold vision that you've set out for us, and we'll continue to do events like this.
So our next goal was to implement IT governance, and by doing so, we now have a formalized and documented process to follow for any incoming technology initiatives. In addition, for the first time ever, we now have a three-year IT roadmap. We know and can predict what those initiatives are going to be for the next three years. Beyond that time, it becomes a bit challenging as technology changes so frequently, but we feel very firm about the next three years and what initiatives we'll actually be working The real neat thing here is that we now have a direct result of $800,000 of cost avoidance. This can be anywhere from either duplication of requests for technology initiatives, or even leveraging existing technologies. Sometimes, there's a conflict with the IT strategy, but really, what we're seeing is $800,000 in cost avoidance, having implemented IT governance. The next goal, standardizing and enhance service delivery. One of the very first things that we had to establish was a framework that we would be working by within IT. What we did was adopt ITIL, or ITIL, which is Information Technology Infrastructure Library. This is a common industry-used framework for delivering IT services. In addition, we became very customer-centric, very customer-focused. We wanted to ensure we were providing high-quality customer service to all of our city staff and constituents. Last, we established great career paths for the IT team. We established a development plan and also deployed a number of training sessions, including project management, business analysis, as well as going back to the ITIL framework. This then resulted in, we had 94% survey respondents rating IT services and support as excellent. More notably, with the implementation of standardizing services, we have now decreased our time to resolve issues by 55%. So what that means is, if something normally had taken six days to resolve, but now takes three, but were three days, it is now day and a half, so really, 55% decrease in our ticket closures, pretty remarkable. Our goal for upgrading technology infrastructure and formalizing our information security, one of the very first things we had to do is, we'd actually established a cloud-first strategy. This allows IT staff to be much more nimble in being able to deploy services across the city. It also means that we have better resiliency, redundancy, and disaster recovery for the services that we're providing. As I mentioned earlier, we had a very aging network and phone system. One of the first things that we tackled was actually replacing our telephone system. We have over 1,000 telephone handsets throughout the city that have been deployed, as well as the actual system itself, and miles of network cabling that have been replaced at all our city facilities. We wanted to increase our security posture, so we deployed a number of security enhancements, only a few of which we can talk about tonight. What this meant was first, hiring an information security manager, Mr. Raj Patel, who's behind us right now. This then resulted in 99.98% network availability, and in addition, for the first time, we actually have metrics on our security incidents. So we've remediated over 149 security incidents over the course of this time, this is actually fiscal year 14. Another notable item is we've deployed Wi-Fi to a number of city facilities. This really is allowing connected fabric for both city staff, as well as any of our guests, to any of the facilities across the city.
Thank you, Lisa, again, and we're having so much fun that the time is running away with us, so I'm going to pick up the pace a little bit. So all of this work over the last two and a half years, we're extremely proud, as you can tell, I'm very proud of the team that are here and who do the work behind the scenes, but we're also being recognized by our peers and from organizations. We're, one of the areas in which we're particularly pleased to report on is, for the second year in a row, Palo Alto was named one of the leading digital cities in America. Last year, we were number one, this year, we're number two, but we're in the top three, which is most important among all cities in the country. And you can see, there's a number of other awards that we've received, including being named the best of the web for our city website, two years in a row. This is a website that receives over 4 million hits per year. And just a couple of years ago, I was very privileged to represent all of you and the city manager at the White House for the extraordinary work we've been doing here for the last couple of years. And so here's another factoid for you. Eighty percent of people say that digital interactions with government, or eighty percent of digital interactions with government cost 80% less than traditional non-interactions. Doing what we're doing really translates quickly to real financial results. Okay, I wanted to share with you some top-level things we've learned, and which will guide us as we go into the future. The first thing is, we have to go beyond this legacy technology we have, because it's just a distraction, and it's costing us a lot of money to maintain. Every organization has this problem, and we're working as fast as we can to move, to resolve that. I found that, you know, I was able to come to the city and meet an amazing group of people, and they told me loud and clear, if you give us the skills, we'll do great things, and so that's absolutely true. We have to train not only the IT staff, but across the city, everyone will benefit from better training around how to use the 300 or so technology systems that we have. You know, hiring in Silicon Valley is hard. Hiring for government in Silicon Valley is really hard, so we struggle with the marketplace, we really do, on a number of levels. But what we want to do, and I think we've proven it with some of our recent hires, we want to make this just an incredible place to come to work, to play with great innovative technologies, and make a meaningful contribution in your life, and I think that's how we'll succeed and compete with the tech companies. It's not lost on any of us that role of, the role of data is increasing significantly. If we have close-to-real-time data, we can make better decisions. If we have, make available data to our community, there can be more transparency, and we're seeing this not just in Palo Alto, but across the nation, across the world. One thing we learned was, we could increase the velocity in IT, but there's only a certain amount of technology projects you can run at any time in a city of 1,000 people. At some point, everybody's working for me. I'm just kidding, but the point is, we have to run the city, too, so there is only a certain amount of tech you can do at any point in time. And finally, and it's not surprising, we are the heart and birthplace of Silicon Valley, this city has a tremendous appetite for tech, and we've only seen that take an uptick here in the last 18 months. That's why we're seeing some big numbers around the amount of technology projects and the amount of investment we're doing now as a city. And so I'll just summarize some of the areas that we're headed, give you time to ask some questions. Just in the next few weeks, we'll be coming forward, first to the Finance Committee, around a new vision for our core systems for the city. This is, you told us loud and clear a little while ago that you wanted to understand what was going to be the future of SAP at the city. This is a $3 million cost each year to the city, and you want to understand, what are we going to do? Are we going to stay with it? Are we going to move away? And so we're close to bringing forward some recommendations around that. We're also going to look at a future roadmap for our GIS systems, which I believe need considerable work today, both not only in the technology, but in the way we're staffing our GIS. As you know, we're co-managing quite a few items related to fiber to the home, and to exploring both wireless and Wi-Fi capabilities, and as Mayor Holman said, coincidentally, next week, we will be having a similar session to this, just on that topic. The world is certainly moving towards mobility or mobile devices as the platform of choice, and that's not going to be any different in government. So we anticipate a lot more mobile apps and applications, and the attendant automation that will go with that. And surprisingly, we built ourselves a big data center a few years ago, and instead of filling it with more and more machines, we're actually removing machines. Our data center footprint is getting smaller, which has a couple of, more than a couple of benefits, one of which, of course, something very close to our hearts here in Palo Alto, is the reduced impact to the environment, which will be significant over time. And then finally, we'll continue to refresh our systems. Here at the city, when I joined three years ago, everybody used desktop computers. Today, two-thirds of the city is on a mobile device. We've removed over 66% of the desktop computing, and now people are using laptops, tablets, and smartphones, and in the next 12 months, we'll be close to 100% mobile in terms of our staff use. And up ahead of us, we're excited to be moving into a new home for technology here at the city, our Civic Technology Center, which will be on the second floor of City Hall here, and it'll be a place that we're proud to come to every day. It'll look like a Silicon Valley startup, but it certainly will make us, the environment will make us even higher performers, so we can deliver to the city. So I just want to remind you again that our work over the last two and a half years on this strategy is the start of a lot more work to come. We have said a lot of positive things this evening, but we're humble enough to recognize that there is enormous work ahead in technology in the city, not just to support some of our back-office things, but to support the key initiatives around transportation, sustainability, and other areas that you're very focused on. Our vision is bold, and it's here to support your goals as a city council, for our city manager, for our city departments, and ultimately, our goal is to provide the best services we can to our community. So with that, I'd like to thank you very much for your time this evening, and ask you any, if you'd like any questions, or if the city manager would like to say something.
No, I have a lot I could add or say, but I am going to defer to the council.
So, thank you for all of that, and so, two things. One is, if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to this item, now is the time to turn in a card, be reminded that any comment should be hopefully focused on things having not to do with fiber, we'll be having that discussion next week. And to council members, to help us keep on track, we have about 20 minutes, we got started a little bit late, so, Councilmember Ness.
So, not a question, Jonathan, but a request. We were in Washington, as you know, and actually, no, I think we were in Austin, and I don't remember, Karen, did you go to that presentation? And I don't remember, Karen, did you go to that presentation with me? That was absolutely excellent, of all the apps you have developed and all the other cities who mentioned they used your apps. It was very impressive. So if you have an opportunity to, in some way, send that information to us, I think people would be delighted with it and surprised. Palo Alto actually became so redundant that day that we looked at each other and said, do we do all this? And quite clearly, we do. So I just would like to see you really, you know, toot that horn a little more, let everyone know what it is you're actually doing, and how admired we are by other cities. We casually look at these great awards you've gotten, and those were not earned casually. They were earned with a lot of hard work and a great deal of dedication. So thank you very much, and we certainly enjoyed the presentation in Austin.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember DeVois.
Hi, it's nice to meet you. And thank you for bringing your team and for your team for coming tonight. It's great to see everybody here. I guess my first question is, did anything that the city used before get donated to the computer museum in Mountain View? Sounds like it was pretty bad when we came.
Well, if it's a serious question, we...
No, it's not a serious question. Sorry. So one thing that's not entirely clear to me, I mean, it sounds like you talked about traffic lights, there's utilities, kind of smart grid. Do you guys touch everything in the city, every group? And are there any, is there any other engineering or development group in certain departments, or are you guys it?
Terrific. We do touch everything in some form, that's for sure. When we quote the number of around 306 different solutions, that's all 16 departments. But there are really smart people in each department who have different roles relative to technology. For example, we have a role called the IT liaison, and this person is typically a conduit between IT and the department. In utilities, for example, where they are a very high user of technology, of course, there are a lot of folks who are specialized in systems like our SCADA system. In the library, in our libraries, where we, again, are, we are using a lot of technology, we have a small handful of people who are expert in their systems. So by all means, it's a partnership. Right? Right, right across, including, as the city manager points out, we have a public safety department, which, including fire and police, and emergency operations center, using technology in very, very smart ways and leading ways. They're recognized. So we have, for example, Charlie Cullen, who's our technical services director. He reports into public safety, but we consider him a part of the IT family and a partner to us.
Yeah. I'll try to make it quick, because I have a couple of other questions. Yeah, I wondered if there's been any discussion of kind of creating a data analytics center of excellence across the departments? I know you have the open data thing, but more internally for business analysis. And it kind of extends outside of IT, but maybe even getting into surveying technology and that kind of stuff, deploying surveys.
Well, yes, I would say in the kind of conversation-planning phase related to, you know, the integration with a lot of the performance management efforts that we're undertaking, at the same time, you know, we've been in conversation, involved Jonathan in particular, me, a little secondarily, with the Office of Urban Mechanics in Boston, that has used a lot of analytics and analysis on services and those sorts of things. So I would say that it is, it's clearly in our focus. I would say that we're taking baby steps right now in that regard.
On the computer security front, what is our biggest risk? What data do we have that would be the most damaging, or, you know, what is it that we need to protect as a city?
We usually don't like to say that in public meetings. No, just kidding.
Well, more generally.
Go for it.
So there's different ways you can think about security risks. I mean, we talk about confidentiality of information, the integrity and availability. One of the ways in which we have seen the impacts of security attacks is in the availability of our systems. So it may not be that the perpetrator is after particular data, but we may lose access, for example, to email for a number of hours, and it's a massive inconvenience. People, you know, if they're off email for a second here, it's a big deal. And we could see that across the board. We have some infrastructure staff, and so not being available is a big deal to us. One of the areas that every organization needs to focus on is how they handle anything to do with payment. Here at the city, we have multiple forms of payment receipt, but we're almost out of that business in that we've essentially, it's been done by other providers, so we don't have to be in the payment card industry space. And then there's the integrity issue, which is really around potentially somebody getting into our system and changing the data, and that is not unusual. The stakes are high, the risks are there. We have actual issues that we are dealing with on a fairly regular basis. It's the kind of work, actually, that when we are successful, nobody knows. And clearly, I'll come to the city manager often when there's something of significance. But this is something that we probably won't win anytime soon, but we'll just have to manage it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Berg.
Well, Jonathan, thank you to you and your team for both the presentation and all the great work that's been getting done over the last two and a half years now. First, I'd like to ask a question on the, one of the slides was about the $800,000 in cost avoidance, and that was over the two-and-a-half-year period, correct? Does that include all of the efficiencies that are gained through increased digital interaction? Or is that, are those savings additive to this 800?
Currently, that's just a cost avoidance for either solutions that are being deployed, so it's not necessarily taking into effect any productivity changes, anything like that.
So if we have billing or something that we automate, and is that included in that number?
No, it's not.
Is there an intention to try to capture the economic benefit to both the city and the consumer? And that would be something that would be great to begin to track. And so that goes into the next thing. These were some really good, mostly data points. I mean, they're kind of single year or over this period, but as you're moving further along in the program, it'd be really nice to see those trend-tracking elements. And also, you mentioned on the environmental benefits of shrinking the data centers. Was that referring to both transition to cloud use and just simply more efficient centers, even though we're processing more data?
I think you got it spot-on, yes, on both reasons.
And I guess the security thing, you can't even tell us whether you're doing this with key locks or combinations. So finally, I'd just like to reiterate, this is, when you came on board and really took our team and elevated them to new heights over the last two and a half years and brought in new people as well, it's been a really commendable transformation for the whole team. And it's great to see an organization that can have been in one kind of a role and take on a whole new direction and embrace it and move forward. So I think as councilmembers, we really appreciate the opportunity to take credit for all the great work you've been doing.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, right.
Pleasure.
But really, it does go to your team and to all of you. So I just want to say that appreciation.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Enjoy very much periodically your coming back and giving us your updates, especially with the focus on strategy and vision. It's so important to see where we've come from, where we're going. Any specific questions I have, I will wait till they're more appropriate venues. But I do want to comment on one set of the little numbers you threw out. You said 51 percent of the people out there are encouraged to interact with the government more frequently, and they can do it 80 percent cheaper. And I guess as a member of the council, I have noted that we are getting substantially more input from a greater variety of people on every issue. But what's striking to me is that the interactions we're getting are increasingly in detail, thoughtful representations of issues. So it really is an improvement in the quality of interaction as well as the interaction we get. So I want to thank you for that and acknowledge that we are experiencing it.
Great. Thank you so much.
I see no other lights. Councilmember Wobak.
Thanks very much for the report, and thanks for all of the great work that you're doing. Just a couple, actually, three questions. First is a question, actually, probably most for Jim, on process. With our current three-year strategy expiring in June, what's our process look like between now and then to make sure that you've got your next three-year strategy up and ready to go before then?
Well, let's take your views first.
Well, I mean, I don't have the least bit of worry that Jonathan isn't already putting the finishing touches on the next three-year strategy. So I think that there will be a sort of seamless handoff between this first period and going forward.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's right. Whilst we got an enormous amount of input on this three-year IT strategy, both from the outside, from councilmembers, city manager, and city staff, we ultimately created it ourselves. This was not an outside endeavor, and we'll do the same thing going forward. Whilst some of our sort of future-specific goals are not yet determined, as we sit here in January, I can say that some of what we're doing, we will continue because I don't consider it finished. So you'll see some stuff carry forward, and then you will see some additional areas that we've discovered over the last two and a half years we need to address, and some of them I pointed out in our way forward.
Okay, thanks. My second question, with the discussion of how many apps that we have, this, you know, kind of goes back to a big question about, you know, what's best, what's the best strategy? But I'm curious if, well, I just encourage you to keep thinking about the question of whether it's best to have a lot of apps or best to unify as much as possible. Of course, you know, the more you unify, the more complex that app becomes. But I can tell you that, at least I've certainly received a lot of comments and requests from people who live in Palo Alto, people who visit Palo Alto or work here, looking for, you know, a one-stop shop for their Palo Alto information in a single app, you know, so they can look up, you know, one, you know, like our Palo Alto 3.1 on stuff, you know, report if there's a light out, but also check, you know, what kind of plastics can I recycle, or what can I put in the compost? Check my utility bill. So there's definitely a desire for easy, one-stop-shop, and I know that you'll work with Claudia to make sure that people know where to find the apps that are useful for them. So that's a question, more of a just request and encouragement. And then lastly, I hope that Jonathan, Jim, Beth, and Claudia can all work together just to make sure that in advance of really any meeting where we're involving the public, which is really any meeting, especially when we get into call-plan meetings and things like that, that any relevant documents, presentations, things like that, supporting documents, reports that will be shared at those meetings are really available for people and people know where to find those easily, online, in advance of the meeting, following the meeting. We really want to do what we can to make sure people are, you know, deeply involved, even if they can't make it to a particular meeting on a particular day, that they have access to all of that information. So again, just more of a request and less of a question, but thank you again for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. May I make a couple of comments, Madam Mayor, just here at the end? Apologize if I've shared this with you before, but you had no idea what our situation was. When I got here in 2008, I mean, we had no Wi-Fi at all. We had a 30-year-old phone system, I mean, and no voice-over Internet protocol. I mean, we really had a rat's nest of cabling and a really, really, really mediocre, just sort of, network as it relates to hardware. No social media presence, no apps. Obviously, that was in 2008. The whole world is, you know, that space has accelerated, but we have kept up with it. And I would just say to the question, Councilmember DeVois's question about other places, there is a kind of synergy and multiplier effect from the support that Jonathan does. So if we look at our Development Services Center and the array of technological improvements that they've made, even right now, they sort of mash up a pilot that we're working on with the cell of the permitting system as it relates to the business license tax, I mean, the Business Registry. Just talking with them, they've got about 500 governmental clients, and they were telling us that we are head and shoulders just across an array of things at the head of the pack in their client base as far as our receptivity and the innovation that we're looking at in a host of different things. And then lastly, I just would use this as an opportunity, since Jonathan and Lisa and the staff wouldn't necessarily say this, but even just this past month, two other recognitions that we've received, we have just been recognized by an organization called GovLoop, which is a knowledge network for government, connecting over 150,000 government employees. Looking at our award-winning Open Budget Platform, we were recently recognized as one of the top eight financial transparency websites in the entire country at the city level. And then each year, the Huffington Post, which you would know, publishes the list of the 100 most social, online social, chief information officers on Twitter, and for the second year in a row, Jonathan has been recognized as one of the 100 most social CIOs on Twitter in the world, and his tweets cover the world of civic innovation and current affairs in technology. So again, congratulations. Thanks for that. That's the work that you're doing at 2:00 in the morning, and we really appreciate that also. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Berman.
Well, I don't know if I can say it better than Jim, but I don't have any questions about this presentation. I'm sure, I'll say some questions for the Google Fiber, or for the Fiber, excuse me, presentation or conversation we'll have in a couple of weeks. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the presentation, which was really helpful in getting us caught up to speed on what you've done over the past two and a half years. And, you know, that work allows our entire staff to provide higher-quality service to our residents cheaper and faster, and provides our residents to provide input to us easier. And then that's all exactly what we're trying to achieve, and so really appreciate it. I can't help but notice over the two years I've been on council that, you know, whenever you're, and this isn't a dig at the other departments, but whenever the IT staff is here, they look happier and more excited to be here. That might be because you guys don't have to be here that often. But it's been noticeable to me and, you know, shows in the work you guys do, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Sharif.
Thank you, and I also want to say it was a great presentation. And I guess I just wanted to go back to a little bit, I remember when you were first hired and you took me back into the server room, and you outlined your vision at that point. And what's really rare, and I think that's what I really want to compliment you on, is that there's so few people, when they first take a job, that you outlined a cogent vision of exactly what it was going to look like, and now it looks like it, you know, roughly five years later, four years later. And, you know, I think that's a huge achievement, and so I really wanted to say, you know, it's very impressive when you get to do that. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I really liked the hackathon that we had, and I think we should have another one soon. I mean, I think that was a huge success. I think people came out, citizens of Palo Alto really liked it, and I'd like to see us do that again.
So I have just a couple of, I have just a couple of quick things here. Councilmember Niss mentioned the open government capacity that we have on our city's website and kind of interchangeably open government, open data. And I think both of us were surprised. We went to different tracts in Austin, but the one that I went to pretty much featured open government. And I was stunned at what all you can do on it, and they use Palo Alto as an example. So what I've encouraged us to do is not keep our capabilities a secret. So... So because all of the four of us there didn't really know what the capability was of this particular thing, it's fabulous. So I would really like to see there be a live demonstration of what the capability is, especially as we go into the budgeting cycle. It's a great tool. I mean, what all it can do, and presuming and assuming that all of our data is accurate that's in there. It's an amazing, fabulous tool, and we should really utilize it in our budgeting cycle especially. So thank you for that. City Manager?
I don't know if they made this clear, not only were we one of the first, we were really the first. They were diddling around with state financial information at this just such a high level that just sort of said, you know, that's not going to be effective at all. You really need to come to a city and start to untie things at that level. And that's what they've done, and of course, you probably have heard, they're moved all across the country now.
Yeah, I believe it was developed in Mountain View by a company in Mountain View, and we were an early adopter. So that's one thing. And then another just quick comment is, you know, being where we live especially, but I think anywhere, what we want is more, faster, better. And what we have is we have fewer staff, faster resolution, and better capability. So thank you for that. And just one last time, because some people raised their hands and all this, but would the IT staff just stand, please, so we can see who you are and recognize you? Thank you very much. So thank you for all you do every day, and appreciate your coming tonight and for the presentation, Jonathan and Lisa. So thank you very much. And thank you to colleagues for being brief. So our next item is agenda changes, additions, and deletions, and we have two things. One is moving councilmember questions, comments, and announcements to immediately after item number seven and before item number eight. And City Attorney, we don't need a motion for that, do we? And the other is staff has requested that item number four, which is the construction grant agreement with the Association of Bay Area Governments and San Francisco Bay Area Water Trail for the Palo Alto Bayland Sailing Station be continued, and that will return at an appropriate time following review, outreach, and potentially a different recommendation. So thank you to staff for recognizing the sensitivity of that. So with that, we have City Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I did want to share that the Local Agency Formation Commission, otherwise known as LAFCO of Santa Clara County, some of you who are new on the council will ultimately familiarize yourself with the role of that commission, has announced that it will conduct a service review of the 15 incorporated cities in Santa Clara County this year, as well as certain unincorporated areas such as Moffett Field and Stanford. And the review will cover a range of services provided by cities and will focus on joint efforts and/or opportunities related to shared services, sprawl prevention, infill development, and preservation of agricultural lands, and the review will seek to identify potential opportunities for collaboration amongst cities and other local agencies or organizations to achieve common goals in the efficient delivery of services. Our staff will be monitoring this process and will include periodic updates to the County Cities Managers Association, the Association of Planning Officials, and to LAFCO. For further information on the reviews and on LAFCO itself is available on the LAFCO website at santaclara.lafco.org. Now that the Mitchell Park Library and Community Center has ended its five-week grand opening, I did want to share some statistics with you on the library itself, updating things. The Mitchell Park Library has registered almost 2,600 new library cards. All five library locations, knowing that temporary main closed in December, over 3,000 library cards issued. To compare, in fiscal year '14, 6,400 cards were issued at all branches in a 12-month period. The Palo Alto Art Center has been awarded a California State Superintendent's Award for Excellence in Museum Education for the Cultural Kaleidoscope Program. This is the second such award for our art center, which also received the award two years ago for Project Look. Cultural Kaleidoscope is a unique artists-in-the-schools program that connects the diverse communities of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto through the visual arts, and the award will be presented at the California Association of Museums Conference in San Diego in February. So congratulations to Director Karen Kinzel and her staff, and to Rob Duvois and the folks in community services. And just to report back that the Human Relations Commission sponsored a senior summit on Thursday, January 15th, and over 40 senior service providers gathered to discuss leading chronic and urgent needs facing seniors today. I know councilmembers were in attendance there. The top three needs identified were transportation, secondly, coordination and collaboration of services, and third, housing. So the notes of that meeting will be posted on the HRC, the Human Relations Commission website, and discussed at a future meeting. Also, last week, the California Park and Recreation Society released recipients of its annual awards of excellence, and the city of Palo Alto and Group Four architects have been selected as a 2014 recipient for excellence in facility design for the Mitchell Park Library and Community Center. And the award of excellence recognizes outstanding achievement in the areas of facility design, park planning, marketing and communication, and community improvement and programming. So we're happy to hear this, and the presentation of awards will take place at their annual conference in Sacramento in March 13th in Sacramento. And then I mentioned just briefly the Business Registry, but I wanted to let you know that the creation phase of the online registration tool is nearly complete. The backend configuration and integration with the city's permit management system is taking place now, and we will begin a beta test phase by the end of the week to sort of tweak the functionality and user experience and ensure that the tool is fully functional and robust, as well as fulfilling the council's direction to make it easy to use prior to the public launch. Our plan is to implement the public launch beginning on Monday, March 2nd, along with a multifaceted outreach campaign. There will be payments, as you recall, for participation in the Business Registry, a flat fee of $50 per business, which will be due by March 31st, 2015, as per the ordinance, which was in effect in early December. But we will allow an additional 60 days for staff to conduct outreach and educational events and visits and more to report. And I think that that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is oral communication. So if anyone wants to speak to an item that's not on the agenda, and we have a few speakers, you will have three minutes, and our first speaker is Mark Weiss, to be followed by Omar Chaddie. And when your name is called, and the next name is called, if you could move to the front to help us expedite, that would be terrific. Thank you.
My thoughts tonight on these important matters are in context of those of Matt Lydicote, Keith Lockhart, and Sister Maria Amaculata of Holy Trinity OCD, also known as Gloria Acebo.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Omar Chaddie, to be followed by Wyn Gersich.
Hi there. My name is Omar Chaddie, and as you old-timers know, that I've been coming here after every fatality, after many fatalities on the Caltrain high-speed rail tracks out here. So the death count now, since 1995, when Dan Richard, who's the CEO of High-Speed Rail, confirmed they decided to use Caltrain tracks, back in, you can listen to In-Depth KCBS, and you'll hear that, 214 people dead on these tracks. 50 poor people dead since I've been coming to this council, and the council has done nothing. 10 people died last year, two have already died this year. My recommendation is, and has been, BART, which requires grade separation, which is electrified, which has the third rail underneath you, don't go back to 1910 catenary. You're far advanced. Thank goodness, there's one assembly candidate who's starting to talk about BART around the bay and possibly whatever it takes to reroute High-Speed Rail over to Oakland and over so it'll have a straight shot to Sacramento. That might be a compromise. But the point here is, too many people are dying on these tracks. As Jackie Spears said at the Golden Gate dedication for the barrier, "It's the obligation of public officials to protect the public health and public safety." I ask you, please, you're going to have a lot more surprises, as I've said before in some of the meetings with this. I've been at this for 30 years on transportation around here, and I came here in 2008 with Herb, and I argued against this thing because of the lies and deception that are going on. So you shouldn't have been surprised by the electrification. You wait till they get rid of the blended solution, because that's not going to hold with three different operating entities on four tracks. So, and there are more surprises coming. If you've been following the legislation, I hope Gail Price had been keeping you posted on how the state is usurping more and more of the land and the expectations around the transit-oriented district from the locals. So please, if nothing else, to save lives and start the 15-year planning process, which is another 200 people are going to die on this corridor, and 20% of them are typically Palo Altons, at least as an offset, study the BART thing, reach out and ask them to talk through VTA. BART has been very flexible, working with Fremont under Lake Elizabeth, they worked with VTA, VTA has its auspices, and let's see if we can't at least start talking about bringing BART up to Palo Alto, Stanford, and the shopping centers, and then that'll close the 30-mile gap that's left for BART around the bay, which will double its capacity and save more lives. Yes, people do kill themselves with BART, but far fewer by any ratio. You have that obligation, and I would ask you and plead with you to really consider that. And if nothing else, use it as a lever, leverage against high-speed rail. Boy, that'll shake them up. Okay? But we need real mass transit. Remember, BART's carrying 490,000 people a day. This thing is carrying 60,000, it's at capacity. We link everything together, and you have transportation demand management, because all the people that come over here from the East Bay, many of them can use BART once it connects. You don't need to dump BART and rail. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Wyn Gersich, to be followed by Bill Rosenberg.
Hi, my name is Wyn Gersich, and I met Paul Connett from Fluoride Action Network, and he went up to the Sonoma County, and Sonoma County actually put it on the ballot not to fluoridate their area, and it passed not to fluoridate. And tonight, I'm going to give you the same studies that Paul Connett showed up there. This man has actually stopped fluoridation in many cities throughout the United States and globally. And you know that most of Europe does not fluoridate their water, because right here is one of the studies that it causes osteosarcoma, which is bone cancer, and Procter and Gamble knew that it caused bone cancer before they even put it in their toothpaste. So I'm going to go through a slideshow really quick, if you could do this, and this slideshow tells you some of the things about why we should not fluoridate. Anyway, Paul Connett is from St. Lawrence University in New York, and he's a toxicologist, and he's quite a speaker. And also, too, if the people at home would download what I'm putting on public record tonight, hopefully maybe the people in Palo Alto will get this poison out of your water. It's been in your water since 1954, and also in San Francisco's. And this is my slideshow here. Let's wake up, they're killing us, there's poison on the tap, and chloramine's one of them, too. Can you click it, please? So, you know, this stuff's really corrosive, and this is the stuff they're putting in those new hetch-hetchy water pipes, wow! And we've got metal pipes, and if it's corrosive, those pipes aren't going to last too long, are they? So the next one, please. This is Paul Connett from Fluoride Action Network. You can check all his studies and his book called "The Case Against Fluoride." And the next one, this is the Fluoride Deception Book by Christopher Bryson, and has the whole history of why this poison's in the water and how our government covered it up. And the Professional Perspective on Water Fluoridation video, I put on the public access channel at Chabot College, because I was taking medical assisting courses, and my teacher kept insisting that fluoride was so good. And when I put that on the public access channel, even one of the deans of the school said, "It's poison," and I said, "That's right." So I quit medical assisting. I also, I put another video about vaccinations from the Center of Disease Control, and they didn't do that in Hayward either with the fire department. Continue. Jackie Spears wrote a bill, and she put this on, it's, you can see the title of it right there in bold print, and she's the one who wrote a bill to fluoridate the rest of this state after the studies were done at Patel Memorial Institute. You can change it, please. And these are the side effects. She didn't tell you what the side effects of putting poison with lead and arsenic in the water, because we're drinking fluorosililic acid, which is a phosphate fertilizer waste. Next one, please. This tells you all the things, please look up my slideshow, because you can check this out when you're at home. This stuff is also, fluoride's used in serine gas, it's used in Prozac, it's used in antibiotics also. Please, next one. And this is Dr. Dean Burke, who did the federal studies at the Patel Memorial Institute. And do check out what he says, because he says it causes cancer worse than any other chemical they go to put in our water.
Thank you. And Bill Rosenberg, to be followed by Nancy Krupp.
Hi, I'm Bill Rosenberg, 820 Bruce Drive, Palo Alto, and I'm here to talk to you about this evil material, bulk styrofoam, that's used for packaging. On January 1st, in the Mercury News, there was an article about Santa Cruz, and they have a new machine to densify this material, and that prompted me to write a letter to the city council. I hope you all saw my email. I've been here before. I've talked in the past to your Environmental Services Division. They don't particularly care for densification. I don't either, but we have to do something with this material as long as we allow it to come into our homes. We don't have a good path for getting rid of it now. The city doesn't want it, the county doesn't want it, the landfill certainly doesn't want it, it doesn't recycle. So what I'm really hoping that you'll do is find a way to prevent this from coming into our homes to start with. My suggestion in the past has been to impose a recycling fee, or call it what you will, some fee like we'd impose on television sets at the point of sale to disincentivize manufacturers like Hewlett-Packard from using this material as their packing material. There are plenty of good alternatives. Palo Alto can act by itself. Now that we've gotten rid of the plastic bags, this is now the number-one contributor to plastic waste in our streams and ultimately in the bay. So I hope that you'll take this issue seriously in this year and listen to your Environmental Services Division people, who are going to make this a priority this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Nancy Krupp, to be followed by Kip Hussey.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nancy Krupp. I'm the former VP of Advocacy for the Palo Alto PTA Council, which represents all 17 schools here in our city Palo Alto. I am also the current Director of Legislation for the Sixth District PTA, which represents four counties, including Santa Clara County. But I'm here tonight on behalf of the PTA Council just to talk briefly about an extremely exciting development for our city and our community and our schools tomorrow morning, when the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors is going to hear Supervisor Joe Sumidian's proposal to devote $8 million of Santa Clara County affordable housing funds towards the purchase of the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. And these are funds, by the way, that can only be used in our community within six miles of Stanford, so this is a very exciting development. But as we all know, $8 million will not purchase the park, and more funds are needed, particularly from the city Palo Alto, our affordable housing fund. So I would just like to read a statement. It's on behalf of the Palo Alto PTA Council, signed by the President Susan Usman. But "We support Santa Clara County Supervisor Joe Sumidian's proposal to apply $8 million of county affordable housing funds towards purchasing the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. Given these county funds can only be used for affordable housing within six-" Given these county funds can only be used for affordable housing within six miles of Stanford, this proposal is a perfect fit for these funds. We call on Palo Alto City Council," that's all of you, "and other local entities and individuals to join the county. We can't think of a better use for Palo Alto affordable housing funds. Preserving Buena Vista with its culturally and economically diverse population enriches our schools and our community. As PAUSD School Board policy emphasizes, the diversity of the student population and staff enriches the learning experience for all students. Recognizing this issue's significance to our community and schools, both the Palo Alto School Board and the PTA Council representing all 17 Palo Alto schools, passed resolutions supporting our Buena Vista students remaining part of our community." And we have about 103 students currently living in the Mobile Home Park. And I'm not sure if you're aware of a recent Stanford study showing that 100% of the children in this Mobile Home Park graduate from high school, which is just unheard of for lower economic demographic students. So in closing, on behalf of the council, I just wanted to say three words. Please, call Joe. We can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Hussey to be followed by Winter Dellenbach.
Hello, I'm Kip Hussey from Palo Alto. I don't know if you've noticed it. I've been listening and there's so many good things happening in the city. And it might, you might not have noticed that trouble, times are tough for a lot of people in this Bay Area. I mean, I'm being a little facetious. It's really tough and throughout this country. And things aren't going to get much better, it doesn't look like, anytime soon. So last December, we had police rioting again in the East Bay. I don't know if our, if our police force was sent there to back up the Berkeley Police or the Oakland Police like they had several years ago when they rioted against the Occupy movement. But the, but that kind of thing has to stop. It's not, people protesting against racism, protesting against inequality, protesting against wars, what else might there be come up? But there's, you know, those are fundamental rights to do. And just because police decide that they want to have to clear the streets or to make it nice and safe or what, whatever, you know, for business as usual, we go and we back up. We didn't during Occupy. Maybe we did it last December. We, we send our police to back up whatever they're going to be doing. I think we need to stop that. I think if Palo Alto wants to show it's true, you know, progressiveness, the things that we are, can be really proud of. And I've seen, seen a lot of good things coming. But now is the time that we can show, be a model for how to get out of being basically lap dogs, some people might say, you know, attack dogs. You know, that's extreme, but when your police are being used to quell civil unrest that's constitutionally protected or is, you know, okay, they take the streets, that's not, you know, to protest something. That's not, that's not something we should be supporting, I don't think. I think that should at least go through the council for a vote. I have no problem with joint activities with police if it's immediate dangers and things like that, but I don't think the Japanese are going to attack anytime soon. So, you know, they've been used, these, these things have been used to, to allow police to do some pretty nasty things to people. And I think we should, we should nip this one in the bud. Hey, we don't need to have our cops being used, however, some other police force decides to use them. We can have some kind of accountability here. And if it means that we don't get our Pentagon reject weapons, so be it. I can go without a tank in Palo Alto. Or do we have one? I don't know. But, you know, just, just demanding that for civil unrest, labor, labor strikes, that we have votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Ronna DiVincenzi.
Could you put the first slide up? I wanted to let the news and the editorials speak for Buena Vista tonight. There's a lot going on. I'm not going to be here every week talking about the same thing, Buena Vista. But there's a lot going on now, so I'm here for two or three weeks probably talking to you. Editorials, there were incredibly thoughtful, surprisingly deep editorials in both the San Jose Mercury News and the Palo Alto Daily Post, a Friday editorial. I can't remember that ever happening since they usually editorialize on Mondays. And I don't know if you've seen them, so I'm here to help in case you didn't. Next slide. Letters. Today in the San Jose Mercury News, there was a letter to the editor from the CEO of the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley. "Let's pool our resources and talents for innovative solutions to keep Buena Vista in place. It would be a solid investment in a sustainable future for Silicon Valley," he stated in part. Next slide. Letters to the editor. Not only letters to the editor, to the four local newspapers, that includes the San Jose Mercury News, but also, I think that some of them have been CC'd to you all. And also I know that Joe Sumidian's office, the board of supervisors have gotten dozens of letters, literally dozens of letters in support of Buena Vista with residents staying in place, the land being acquired. Control of the land is what it's about. It's where it's at. Control of the land and keeping residents there, there's much to be figured out, but those two points are pretty simple, pretty understandable. I don't mean they're simple to execute, but they're very understandable and straightforward. And other letters from local people, Professordville, Barron Park, Steppin' Up. I think you can read these for yourself. I like what Don Anderson said, "If, if we can't extend ourselves in times like these, in times of great affluence, great wealth, when can we? And who are we if we can't?" And maybe there's one more? Is there one more? No. So, oh, there is one more. And a couple other letters from another Barron Park in Duvernac. "City housing funds should be pledged to Buena Vista." Yes, they should. And not nickel and diming in a big way. Where are 400 people, longtime residents of Palo Alto, at this greater risk? Where should those housing funds go? They should go straight to Buena Vista. And that's it. You can read Bob Roth's offering. So thank you very much. So let's all keep on top of what's going on because the supervisors meeting is tomorrow morning. We expect it to pass.
Thank you very much. Ronna DiVincenzi to be followed by Aram James.
Green light, thank you. I'd like to thank you for investigating the safety issues that have arisen on California Avenue from the use of embedded glass in the sidewalks and especially for noting that the biggest problem area I brought to your attention, the loose shards on the 400 block of California Avenue, was caused due to poor installation of the materials by the contractor. With that said, if council's intent is to add even more glass to these sidewalks, please be mindful that sharp edges are everywhere glass is embedded. And almost weekly, I'm becoming aware of new concerns from people that glass is causing problems. I just learned that a tremendous amount of glare reflects from the western sun on the walks in the late afternoon, and I saw that effect for myself, having gone out there last Friday at 4:00. Standing on the corner of California Avenue and Ash Street was like being on the San Francisco Bay when it's filled with sunlight. It has a dazzlingly bright effect, but not in a good way. It was distracting to see massive amounts of glare radiating from the sidewalk for about 100 square feet. For people that have cataract surgery, it would be totally disconcerting adding another pedestrian potential hazard. I don't mean to sound gloomy, but these safety concerns need to be addressed. Perhaps some glass could be used as a decorative element in places where there is no foot traffic, like a trim, but it is simply unwise to continue using this material on California Avenue as it is now. Edward Bulwer Litten, for whom Palo Alto's Litten Avenue was named, once wrote, "A good heart is better than all the heads in the world." With this appeal, I ask you to please search your hearts and do the right thing, not only for the people of Palo Alto, the constituency that elected you to represent them, but also for the visitors to the California Avenue District and for merchants that want to ensure their customers have a pleasant shopping experience, focusing on what merchants have to offer them and not being distracted by the sidewalks as they approach the stores. Leadership, courage, and vision are needed by this council in this decision. Glass sidewalks are proving to be nonsensical and problematic, and they've only been in place for several weeks. Adding more glass to the walks is to throw good money after bad and especially when there's a tremendous amount of foot traffic. The determining factor ought not to be that as of yet, there are no lawsuits against the city. Pedestrian safety is more important and what is best for the district. The hodgepodge look of different sidewalk materials has yet to be addressed. With a 15-foot area on the 100 block of Calab, there are three different materials. In a three-block-long district, consistency should be discussed and not the death grip insistence upon glass. I am including links of television and news coverage, so if there are any lawsuits, or I should say when there are lawsuits, it would be helpful for everybody, including the personal injury attorneys.
Thank you very much. Aram James to be followed by Joe Hirsch.
So I'm going to talk about, I think, three things and I'm going to ask some questions, but they're rhetorical, so no responses, please. So Liz, you were concerned about a gender gap and you discussed that, the potential with the pay raise. I noticed you were up chatting with the governor or at least took a photo with him recently. So I'm thinking maybe you're the one, Chief Burns was able to answer this and maybe you'll be able to answer this. The California Supreme Court, established in 1849, how many women are now on that seven, seven-justice court? It's four. Now, here's another very interesting demographic and Chief Burns got this too. What demographic, for the first time in the history of the California Supreme Court, is missing? You got it. It was Jerry Brown's doing. You might call that ironic. I don't, I think it's appropriate. White males. Marvin Baxter retired on January 5th. So for the very first time in the, so I think, you know, when you look around, it's very interesting mix in terms of when you say there's a gender gap. There may be a demographic gap now that some people will be talking about, not me. Okay, so Pat, I wanted to chat with you for a second. I think in the Post on Friday, the editorial on the Buena Vista matter, you were suggesting that you'd be, it'd be ill-advised for you to discuss both the compensation package issue and bringing $8 million from the city of Palo Alto, as an example, to the table to buy the property. I'm not going to try to get into the full details of the, tonight, on the First Amendment jurisprudence that will allow you to both chew gum and bounce a basketball at the same time. Okay? So what I'm going to try to convince the nine of you is that it is entirely appropriate for you to do that. I wrote a piece on it, on a related subject, Republican Party versus White, that you all saw before. Molly Stump and I happen to disagree on the law there and I've invited at least Mark to read the case law and the other lawyers on there, but I want everybody to do that. Finally, David Carnahan is responding to public records requests on Sundays. This is a man that you should be really proud of. Molly, you cited a case, David was asked to cite it, Regents, Regents of the University versus Superior Court 2013 for the proposition that you, Public Records Act doesn't reach to personal devices used by government employees or city council members. I don't think that's, a case is appropriately cited right now. The Cist, Cist District has that same issue. They ruled in the same way that the Regents case did, but the Supreme Court granted hearing in June. So I don't think it's appropriate to put that out. I think it's an open question whether the Public Record Act will in fact extend to the private, private devices. Thank you.
And Joe Hirsch to be followed by our final speaker, Stephanie Munoz.
Mayor Holman and city council members, I am here once again representing the Cardiac Therapy Foundation of the Mid Peninsula. On January 12th, you approved on the consent calendar a five-year services agreement, in essence, a sublease of that space. That agreement has now been signed and delivered by both parties. I want to thank the city manager. I want to thank city staff and I want to thank the council for supporting this wonderful organization in this way. It is great relief to our members and staff to know that we have another, I have a continued home for five years. Now, I want to mention one other point that has nothing to do with cardiac therapy. A gentleman earlier talked about the fatalities on the Caltrain's tracks. We had visiting guests over the weekend from the Boston area, as it turned out, and drove by East Meadow, East Charleston and looked at the guards who were there. And they always seemed to be attentive. I personally, of course, don't know what their role is, but I was deeply surprised tonight as I drove here from my home over near Gun High, that the guard at the station, when the train came by, was doing some paperwork and paid absolutely no attention whatsoever to anyone who might be in or near or walking over the tracks. I think it would be worthwhile to alert the community as to what the role of those guards really is. I have no idea, but I was deeply stressed to see this person paying absolutely no attention at the time when the train came by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. And our final speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and council members. I have something to say that applies to Buena Vista, but also to every single property in the whole city. I think that people who have paid attention at all to what city councils do, what all government agents do, would understand that eminent domain is a very important concept. In, in effect, the, you, the council members are part owners of every single property in Palo Alto because you dictate what value the property has by saying what may be placed on it. Not everybody can have a supermarket on his land. Not everybody can have an office building. It is the duty of the council, the right of the council, the pleasure of the council, to have some kind of a balance between workplaces and workers, between stores and homes and utilities. You do all that. In the, in the Buena Vista arguments, I have seen a lot about the rights of the landowner. Boy, where were those people when those dingeling judges in Mendocino County told me I had to pay my tenants PG and EVIL? You know, we're very selective in, in these property rights. What I feel is that Palo Alto should understand that in zoning that land on El Camino as R15, they gave a gift to the then-property owner. I don't think that that gift was merited. I don't, I, I think that that was bad faith, that it should have been zoned trailer park because it was the trailer park denizens who voted to go into Palo Alto. That being said, I think that if Palo Alto contributes to buying this land and simply renting it out to the trailer owners, as it always has, although they could improve little bits of it on this, on the side to make some money, I, I think that the price should not be the price that includes the value that Palo Alto added in this gift. Well, not all of it. Remember that the people themselves, the homeowners themselves contribute, contributed to that value by their labor and their purchases and their civic value by their labor and their purchases and their civic duty of sending the children to school and all these useful things that they did. So just remember, in the value of these good things that you might want to buy or not, you own part of it already, or we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that concludes oral communication. So we move now to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, may I just clarify one thing? We typically don't do this, but I just did want to clear for the record with the council that no members of the Palo Alto Police Department were deployed to any of these other locations in the East Bay. I mean, as you know, in some of the post-Ferguson protests, we had some marches and demonstration in our own town here, which, of course, you know, went off without incident, but there was no deployment.
Appreciate the clarification. So we move now to the consent calendar. We have one speaker on item number three, Aram James.
So the item number three involves the annual $100,000 or so that goes to cities to supplement police items, infrastructure, et cetera. And I really, I just, I wrote a piece recently, and I gave you a copy of it called "Equal Access Needed," and essentially, there's some, you know, I've been talking with Dennis Burns about this. In fact, we were talking about it tonight. Menlo Park, there's a piece, the Menlo Park City Council is going to have on their agenda a discussion of the policy and the implementation and the use practices for the body-worn cameras. Tonight, you're going to be voting on whether or not, as part of the COPS grant, we should buy $20,000 more of body-worn cameras. And I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with, and it's not on Dennis, it's a legislative problem, is that if somebody's arrested, and I'm representative and defense counsel, I'm going to get those tapes. But if somebody is beaten down by the police and files a complaint, and they're not arrested, they don't get access to it. The Public Records Act has an exception for ongoing investigations, and includes, once the investigation is complete, you still don't get access to it. So I think it's really important for the citizens to understand what they're purchasing with their dollar. They're not getting transparency. Tomorrow night, because of the fatal shooting in Menlo Park a few months ago of an alleged burglary suspect, they're going to be -- because, look, the body cameras were all turned off. One of the officers didn't have it, and the other two claimed that they weren't off. We'll see what Wagstaff's investigation shows. But I've invited Dennis, and I'm going to talk with Ms. Gross, who, from the city's attorney's office, that does a lot of this kind of work, to really talk to the council and the citizens about what the policy is regarding body-worn cameras, as well as the cameras in the vehicles. Because it's great to have them, but you should know that there's very, very, very limited access to those. The police can show them in their discretion if it shows the police in a favorable light. In fact, the example that I was giving to Dennis tonight, before he had to run off to immediate gun, was if the Menlo Park City Council wanted to see the tape of the shooting, if it had been recorded, they wouldn't be able to get it unless the police wanted to release it. And they would only release it if it was showing the police in a favorable light. So this is a big issue that I hope the council will take on for transparency and understanding what we're spending our tax dollars on. Okay? So maybe at the retreat, I'll go into it a little bit more in more detail, but I hope one of you at least will be involved with police practices issues. I've been working very close with Dennis Burns the last few years. He would be delighted to have some of you to participate in these conversations, so we understand how police practices impacts the community and how we can do the best job of making sure that we have the best police practices in Palo Alto, that we don't get wrongful convictions, that we get the right people when crimes occur, and that we have access to the films, the cameras, even when somebody's not arrested, so we can see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wobak.
Actually, remarkable timing. Regarding the consent calendar, I don't intend to pull anything from the consent calendar, but I did want to raise attention to item number three and the reference to body-worn surveillance equipment. I would just encourage the city manager to make sure to report back to council, include us in whatever the plans are for use of surveillance technology by the police department. I think that's a forward discussion. We'll probably have more as this year goes on.
All right, thank you. And we need a motion to approve consent calendar minus item number four, which staff has pulled to. That has been moved by Councilmember Scharf, seconded by Councilmember Berman. Seeing no other lights, vote on the board to approve items number two, three, and five. There we go. Now, that passes unanimously, so thank you all. So we now go to our first action item, which is item number six, which is approval of mitigated negative declaration and site and design review and design enhancement exception application for a three-story mixed-use building on a 27,000-square-foot site, Zone Service Commercial, or CS, at 441 Page Mill Road. And I'll leave the rest of the description to the staff presentation. So we have a staff presentation, then the applicant and the applicant team combined will be afforded 10 minutes to make their presentation and comments. The council members will need to disclose any conversation they have had with members of the public or the applicant, as this is a quasi-judicial matter. And after the public comments, then the applicant will have, an applicant team will have three minutes to respond to anything they want to. Councilmembers will also be able to ask questions of the staff of the applicant, and if there's any clarification needed from member of the public, you can do that as well. So first off, why don't we do any disclosures? Councilmember Berman, you're reaching for your light.
Last Tuesday, I met with the applicant, and I did not learn anything that isn't in the public record already.
Thank you. Councilmember Burt.
I had a brief phone conversation with the applicant's architect and did not receive any information, not in the record.
Councilmember Ness.
And my experience and Councilmember Berman's was about the same.
Any other disclosures, meetings, conversations with applicant or members of the public? Having declared all of those things, then we go to the staff for a presentation. Director Gettleman.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, council members. We're here this evening for a hearing on an application filed regarding a mixed-use project at 441 Page Mill Road. And I want to introduce the colleagues who are joining me in the presentation this evening, Russ Reich of Planning Staff, as to my right, and will be starting off the presentation. Then we're also joined by Reed Kawahara from Kaiser Marston Associates, a respected land economics firm. In addition, Kara Silver of the city attorney's office is going to assist with the presentation. We'll try and keep this presentation brief, although we did want to cover or summarize the economic analysis that's been presented in the staff report. And maybe I'll just say one more word before we start, actually, two words, state mandate. We described this in some length in the staff report, and we're willing to go into it in greater depth as we get into the discussion this evening. But I think we're all learning that the state density bonus law and the mandate that's handed down from Sacramento has some disadvantages, one would say, for local agencies. And in this case, we're in the position of having to support significant concessions based on the fact that the project includes three units of below-market-rate housing. With that said, I'll turn it over to Russ. We would appreciate an opportunity to respond to public comments at the end of the evening. I noted in one of the public comments we've received so far in writing, there was a suggestion that our municipal code does not require any concessions and that concessions under the Density Bonus Act are optional. That is not the case. And again, we'd like an opportunity to respond on the record if we get other such comments. Thank you. Russ?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holman and council members. Russ Reich, Senior Planner. So I'd like to start off with the image of the site. It's currently for single-family residences that have been rezoned by the city council to service commercial with a site and design overlay back in January of 2013. The site is bounded by the Kellymore Paint Store to the east, a veterinary hospital to the west, larger three- and four-story multifamily buildings across Page Mill Road and single-family residences to the rear. So following the approval of council for the zone change in 2013, the application was submitted formally and went to Planning Commission. And on June of 2014, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that council approve the proposed project. A lot of the discussion at the meeting did focus on the density bonus concessions. One of the things that came out of that was, in addition to the two methods of analysis that were conducted by Kaiser Marston, they asked that they do a value-at-completion analysis. So that third level of analysis was also completed and is provided as Attachment G. The project went through the architecture review process, a total of three hearings before the Architecture Review Board. The design program wasn't altered much through the process, but one of the significant changes that came out of it was the elimination of the request-for-height exception. So they're maintaining the zoning approval for height. And then they also changed the entry tower and really reworked the front and elevation and how the building works horizontally along the street. Another thing to really comment on is the design enhancement exceptions. The main purpose for moving the building three feet back from the build-to line was to be able to incorporate street trees in front of this project. There were a lot of complicated issues that impacted where street trees could be located. There are multiple jurisdictions at play, you know, the city, the county. The county didn't want trees close to the curb as they exist today, and there are a lot of utilities in that location conflicting, so the trees, the building had to be moved back to be able to get the trees in there, which also resulted in pushing the building back into the landscape buffer in the rear. The staff arborist has, Dave Doctor, has reviewed the proposal and does concur that there's adequate room for the trees to achieve the desired privacy screening across the rear. So with that, I'll turn it over to Reed Kawahara for his presentation on the economic analysis. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and members of the city council. My name is Reed Kawahara from Kaiser Marston Associates. We perform the economic analysis of the proposed project. Tonight, I'm going to give you a very brief overview of the state density bonus law and proceed to summarize the analysis that we've undertaken and, of course, be available to answer any questions you may have. Okay, so, under the state density bonus law, by right, a density bonus is to be granted to developers who build a certain percentage of the residential units in the project as affordable. In addition, up to three incentives or concessions can be requested by the developer if additional affordable units are provided. And importantly, the state density bonus law states that the requested incentives or concessions shall be granted unless a written finding can be made based upon substantial evidence that the concession is not required in order to provide the affordable housing costs. One of the frustrations, I think, that our firm has had in analyzing these applications is that the state density bonus law is not precise with regard to the definition of substantial evidence, of affordable housing costs, or what is required in order to demonstrate that those concessions are not required. Nonetheless, the analysis that we've undertaken is consistent with many other development review applications that have been submitted throughout the state, and, in fact, our firm has conducted many of those analyses ourselves. So this slide compares the maximum development that could be built under the current CS zoning without concessions as compared to the proposed project. So the site is about 27,000 square feet in size, about .6 acres. Under CS zoning, you can build up to a 50% lot coverage, and with regard to FAR, you can build up to a .6 residential, .4 office, or retail for a total FAR of 1, or 27,000 square feet of building area. The proposed project on the right, and I've highlighted in green on the slide the three concessions that are being requested, a lot coverage of 68.8% as compared to 50%. Residential actually has been reduced from the permitted .6 FAR to .53. The office and retail FAR has been increased from .4 to .8, and the total FAR has gone from 1 to 1.33. So the three highlighted in green items are the requested off-menu concessions. The next step in the analysis is to define two different project alternatives. The first project alternative is the proposed project, which I just described. The second alternative is an alternative that could be built under CS zoning, but which would maximize the financial return of the project. We've actually analyzed a couple of different iterations of the second alternative. What we first tested for was to see whether or not the maximum building envelope that would be permitted under CS zoning, i.e. the 1 FAR, would generate the maximum return, or actually, an alternative would generate a better return. And we actually concluded that a project that was slightly less than the maximum FAR permitted would be an improvement economically. And the primary reason for that is because with the total FAR of 1, it triggers the requirement for the underground parking garage, which is a very expensive element of the project, and also triggers the requirement for soils remediation. So the second alternative, we concluded that maximized return to the project would be a total FAR of .78, broken out between a .4 FAR office retail and .38 residential. So the next step is to quantify the affordable housing costs. And again, just to remind you, the affordable housing cost is required per the state density bonus law. So we're trying to follow as closely as we can the letter to the law of the state density bonus. So in the proposed project, there are 10 residential units. Three of those would be affordable at low income, so that's 30%. That is what allows them the three concessions. So what we've done to estimate the cost of the affordable housing is to allocate to the affordable housing units the total cost of the project on a pro-rata basis, based on square footage of the project. Recognizing the fact that the three affordable units will generate income, we wanted to recognize that there is a value to those units as an offset to total costs, we estimate the value of those three units at about $380,000. And so deducting that value from the cost yields a net affordable housing cost of 1.85 million. So that number, the 1.85 million, is the first part of the equation per the state density bonus law. The next step is to estimate the incremental value of the concessions that are being requested. In other words, are the concessions that are being requested more or less than what is needed to offset the costs of the affordable housing units? So what we've done here is we have analyzed the development economics of the base case CS zoning alternative as compared with the proposed project with the three off-menu concessions. This is a pretty standard development pro forma approach wherein the income from the project is estimated, the development costs are estimated, and the relationship between the two generates a return, and we compare the yields or the returns for the two projects to estimate what that incremental value is. So in this case, to summarize, we show a net operating income from the base case project of about $950,000 compared with a proposed project of about 1.5 million, generates an increase in annual NOI of about $600,000. Development costs have increased from $15 million to about $24 million for an increased cost of about $8 million. And then when we capitalize the net operating income to come up with a total project value, we come up with an incremental value of about $9.5 million roughly, as compared to the incremental development costs of about $8 million. development costs of about 8 million. So we estimate that the net project value is about 1.28 million. So, the conclusion from our analysis is that the affordable housing cost per the state density bonus law is 1.85 million. The incremental value from the three requested concessions is 1.28 million. And since the affordable housing cost exceeds the incremental value, our conclusion is that the three requested off-menu concessions are required to offset the cost of the affordable housing. Now, if those relationships were reversed, if the affordable housing costs were less than the incremental value, we would come to the opposite conclusion that one or more of the requested concessions may not be needed. That summarizes my summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Kara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. As Director Gittleman mentioned in the beginning of this presentation, this is one of those areas that involves the state density bonus law, and as such, the city is restricted in its ability in certain aspects of this project. It's unusual in the land use arena to have restrictions by the state, as we're a charter city, but this is one of the areas where we do encounter that type of state preemption. The state density bonus law specifically applies to charter cities. Assuming that the findings can be made and that the applicant does fall within its rights to claim the concessions, what is particularly frustrating from a local control perspective is that the state density bonus law does allow projects that are inconsistent with local zoning and local comprehensive plans in general. So, you know, given those restrictions, the council is somewhat limited in its options. We have a slide here on your options. The first option is that you can approve the project with the off-menu concessions as requested by the applicant. And given the restrictions here in the state density bonus law, if you do want to move from that first option, what we would request is that you focus your discussion on requests for additional analysis or information on some of the particular items that we have listed here. In particular, more information, if you would like, on the pro forma supporting the off-menu concessions, the design enhancement exception, and the parking reduction exception that are described in the staff report, and also the series of findings that are contained in the Record of Land Use Action also attached to the staff report. Thank you. And with that, unless the council has any further questions, I think we will turn it over to the applicant to make a presentation.
I don't see any lights from council members, so the design team has 10 minutes, and I have four names here: Norman Schwab, Lee Prince, John Northway, and Elena Campagna. So, Mr. Schwab, would you care to begin? And you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holman and City Council members. My name is Norman Schwab. I'm here to give a brief overview of the project. Sorry. All right. I'll start again. Good evening, Mayor Holman and council members. My name is Norman Schwab, and I'm here to give a quick, brief overview of the project that we're presenting tonight. I'm a Palo Alto resident. I live, in fact, in Barron Park, which is about a mile from this site. So, this site that we're dealing with is at a, it's a prominent site. It's at the center of town. It's the gateway to Stanford Research Park, and it gets a lot of traffic. And the current houses that are situated there are in disrepair, mostly because they are out of character with this road, and they have been out of use, and they are out of scale as well with the development up and down Page Mill Road. So what we've set out to do is design a project that is appropriate for this location. So here you see a three-story mixed-use, a truly mixed-use building. We have attempted to give each of the uses its proper access, and here you see on the ground floor, there'll be an area that is retail, and office on the second floor, and 10 residential units on the third floor. The parking for this project is going to be contained on-site, both in grade and below-grade level, and it's going to be consistent with the Palo Alto's current zoning code. So, this third, the third floor of the residential here that we see is an attempt to create a community of sort. It's away from the street, which is busy, and makes the site difficult to work with for a residential project, but it's important for the city to increase the residential stock, and we have used our understanding of the density bonus to provide as much residential as possible. So we created units that have a common area. They also have private outdoor areas as well. They have living areas and kitchens that face the courtyards so that families can interact, get to know each other, people can mingle, and we wanted it to be a place that is a neighborhood and provide the street that, since that's not available on Page Mill, that people who live in these residential units can interact and have a neighborhood to live in, even though we're on this busy street. And we hope that with this kind of setup, people who live there will be able to take advantage of the amenities in the neighborhood, but also enjoy the privacy that they would be provided with on the top floor of this building. I'll turn over the microphone to John Northway, who will get into some more of the intricacies of this design. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. This project has faced many complexities in both jurisdictional rules and site constraints that we've had to solve. There are three governmental agencies involved with their own rules, which at times were in conflict with each other. Page Mill Road is a major arterial with large-scale buildings on either side. The rear of the site is a quiet residential neighborhood. Physically, the site is constrained by a 30-foot height limit, rear setback lines at a daylight plane. It also has a polluted groundwater at about 18 feet underneath it, kind of sandwiched in. This cross-section, whoops. This cross-section shows how the design was constructed to deal with the various constraints. The building was, whoops, cross-section disappeared. There we go. The cross-section shows how the design was constructed to deal with the various constraints. The building was pushed as far forward on the site as possible to keep it away from the neighbors. This was a request we got during our neighborhood meetings. The rear of the building is 27 feet from the back property line, and the houses are another 42 to 77 feet from the rear property line. The building is set back 17 feet from the curb to provide room for trees and pedestrian walking areas. Because the county controls Page Mill Road and does not allow street trees, we have requested a DEE to set the building back from the curb 17 feet to allow trees and the wide pedestrian way, something the city has been exploring to make for more interesting streetscape. The site is very close to transit. There we go. Keep going in the wrong direction. There we go. The site's very close to transit, with nearby bus stops and easy walking distance from train station. The map on the left with the red dots are the bus stops, and the map on the right shows the route from the train station. Parking. The parking that is being provided is in conformance with the city's regulations for mixed-use buildings. A parking demand management study was consulted, as shown in the staff report, and it showed that at peak parking times, 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., the demand was 79 cars. The city required a 10% safety factor, which brought the demand to 87 cars. 91 cars are being provided. Additional bike lockers and bike rack spaces are being provided to encourage alternative ways of getting to the building. A TDM program will be provided, which will include transit passes and be required to review yearly. The project is dedicated to lowering the flow of cars to the site by using these proven We have met with the neighbors continuously, or off and on, from the time that we proposed the zone change and through the building design. We've tried to address their concerns about parking traffic by implementing the TDM program and supporting the county's desire to get rid of the street parking on Page Mill Road. Noise and light pollution will be addressed, as outlined in the slide, essentially putting it inside the building or up on the roof to cut down noise and light interference. Light from the offices will be addressed by having automatic shades that come down at night. The neighbors selected the trees that they will see from their backyards in the planning screen that is being provided. We believe we have designed a building that also conforms with Policy H2 of the recently passed Housing Element about infill projects. We have tried to design a building that conforms to the rules and policies of the three different government bodies that control this project. It provides housing and jobs, close to services on California Avenue, and is close to alternative transportation. We ask that you support these rules and approve this project. I'll now introduce Lee Prince, our land use attorney, who guided us through the rules of the state density bonus law. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Lee Prince, and I have the privilege of talking to you tonight about state density bonus law. State density bonus law is found in Government Code Section 65915, and it's implemented by the Palo Alto Municipal Code. What implemented means is that the state law controls, but the city has set forth application procedures in its code establishing the process for requesting off-menu incentives, including requiring a detailed pro forma and review by an independent city-hired expert, as was done in this case. So you've already received an overview of the incentives. So these three incentives that are requested do contribute significantly to the economic feasibility of the low-income units, which is the stated intent of the state density bonus law. So state law provides that the incentives shall be granted when, one, it is required to provide for affordable housing costs. KMA has done three analyses and concluded each time that the requested incentives are required to make the affordable housing possible. Second, there is no specific adverse impact on public health, safety, or the environment. You have before you tonight a mitigated NIGDAC that was recommended for adoption by the PTC that concludes the impacts are less than significant. And third, the requested incentives are legal. So reading the specific language from the state density bonus law, the city shall grant the incentive requested by the applicant unless the city makes a written finding based on substantial evidence that one of the three items I listed before is not there. What is substantial evidence? It includes facts, reasonable assumptions predicated on facts, and expert opinion supported by facts. It does not include argument, speculation, or unsubstantiated opinion. So let's talk about the substantial evidence before you tonight. KMA is an expert. They tested all the data and assumptions in the pro forma. They ran three different analyses. With the development cost approach, KMA concluded that because the affordable housing costs exceed the incremental value from the incentives, the incentives are needed to offset the cost of the affordable housing. With the development return approach, the KMA concluded that the concessions are needed because the returns are less. When the PTC asked for more analysis and information, KMA conducted a third valuate completion analysis, included no adjustments to the original analysis where necessary. KMA and staff, as indicated in the staff report, agree that the incentives are needed, and the required findings for denial cannot be made. Three approaches, one conclusion: the incentives shall be approved. Finally, I'm sure you're concerned about precedent and the projects that will come after this one. The city has established a stringent review process. The applicant submits a detailed pro forma, an independent professional, city-hired expert, then tests all the data and assumptions in that pro forma and runs three different analyses. This project has run that gauntlet. There is no rubber stamping in approving this project. No special privileges are being granted. Not all projects will make it past the stringent review process, but this one has, and state law requires the city to grant the incentives. Thank you.
Thank you. So we now will go to the members of the public, and we have 11 cards. So I'm going to ask that members of the public use two minutes to the best of your capability. First speaker will be Judith Fields, and when you hear your name called, if you'd moved to the front, so you're accessible, that would be terrific. Judith Fields to be followed by Frank Engel.
I made a mistake. I was wanting to speak to the project on Park Avenue 445.
That's not on this evening's agenda.
Okay, sorry. I'll be back.
All right, thank you. So, well, that was brief. Frank Engel to be followed by Louis Liu.
Frank Engel, Palo Alto resident for 35 years. When you look at these drawings, they look beautiful, but architectural drawings always look beautiful. But it is on the corner of, one of the busiest corners in the town, one of the busiest corners in the town, and it's also on the street that leads to 280, so there are jams up there, and there's a big jam at the underpass. This is a really difficult location. And so I hope that you will find the opportunity to deny this, although it's not clear whether this, what led to the City Council has about this. My specific comments are that there are many projects like this following in the pipeline, and to me, the real problem is that they're not being thought of as a group. They're being considered one at a time, and as you load them on one at a time, we're dealing with roads that were designed and built 50 years ago, and we don't have any ability to deal with any more traffic there unless you can find a way to prevent it from happening. When I look at the parking provided, it looks like it's one space, sorry, 200 square feet per employee, roughly, and that's the old way of thinking about things, but I would say twice the density is typical for today's high-tech companies. So I think immediately there will be a parking problem. Maybe they can find a way to mediate that as far as the traffic problem goes. I don't know how you can possibly handle this many more cars and many more developments like this coming along on El Camino. I hope you'll find a way to change the city requirements to prevent projects like this from getting this far, and I hope you can find a way to at least change the impact of this particular one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. The next speaker is Louis Liu, to be followed by Judith Wasserman.
Hi, my name is Louis Liu. The proposed project had put a two kind of tree on the backside for the privacy of the people on the backside. The assumption is the people on the first floor of the 430 Paper Avenue. We have a bedroom on second floor, bedroom and bathroom on second floor on the backside facing this building, so I'm kind of wondering if the trees grow big enough, because the tree, proposed tree only 30 feet, may not be high enough, so I'd like to hear how they're going to solve this one. Another one is the, on the backside, they have an area where the employee can go to go smoking during the break time, and I see many other square shopping, shopping square, they have employees gathered together, smoking, and sold a cigarette bar to the other side of fence. And we have kids on the backyard, and so we don't really want to see these, so I want to see if they can put some kind of restriction on the backside so to only allow people to go there for maintenance and don't allow employees to go there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Judith Wasserman to be followed by David Kleiman.
Good evening, Mayor Holman and council members. I'm Judith Wasserman. I'm an architect in town. I've lived here since 1968. I spent 12 years on the Architectural Review Board, if that matters to anybody. This is the kind of project that the city wants. It's a mixed-use project. It doesn't break the height limit. It's in a location that is so close to everything that you can walk, you can walk to the movies from this project. I would like to point out that mixed-use projects only come to you through a quirk of the zoning, that you get site and design on mixed-use projects. I think, it's in my opinion, that mixed-use projects should be encouraged and not penalized because they are such... because they are such great benefit to the city and that you guys should not be burdened with their review. And the other thing I want to say is that the rules are what the rules are, and it's impossible to design a project if the rules are constantly shifting. Tony Carrasco asked me to point out that in his 35 years of experience in the city, the city has always obeyed the law, and I would encourage you to continue to do that.
Thank you. David Kleiman to be followed by Dan Garber.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Regarding this project, I strongly support the recommendations to approve this project by both city staff, the PTC, and the Architecture Review Board. Palo Alto, in my opinion, is in dire need of additional housing, which this project supplies in a most attractive fashion. The city also needs below-market housing, towards which this project makes a reasonable contribution. I encourage you to support the director's finding that allows 91 off-street parking spaces, given the proximity to both Caltrain and local bus routes. I find the design of the project to be pleasing to the eye and compatible with its location. Please approve the project. I'll try to be brief because I know you have other folks following me. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming. Daniel Garber to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
I'm Dan Garber. I support the PTC, the ARB, and staff's recommendation to approve this project. Palo Alto needs housing, even though the project only provides 10, three of which are BMR units. Rather than the 18 allowed, it is most welcome. And the concessions being asked for are allowed by right, not by privilege. I also support the director's finding that allows the 91 off-street parking spaces. The property is within walking distance of both Caltrain and nearby bus routes, and is adjacent to the California PTOD district. The director is right that additional parking spaces will not be needed. It is eligible for the density bonus, and the concessions are logical and with the work of the ARB and the PTC, easily defended. The concessions have real benefits to our city. We need more housing, and not just to meet our state requirements, but to help, even in a little way, to begin to reduce the cost of housing so that more than just the rich can live and work here. I believe the project should be approved.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz to be followed by Bob Moss.
Good evening, Council members and Mayor Holman. Before I go into some philosophical rationale, let me just make one point. Do not allow under-parking, please. They have bought under-parking. Pay them back. You cannot do that. Last year, not last year, yes, last year, Karen Holman, in a council meeting, in speaking of the blade sign for the grocery outlet, said, "Well, why do we have rules if they're just going to be broken?" And I'm asking you that now. Why do we have a parking regulation if it can be so easily broken? The point of the state's density bonus, we could argue, it won't go away in two minutes, but the parking, I don't think you can have any disagreement. You cannot allow more buildings to be underparked, and you cannot make the city replace the missing parking. You can't do it. So please, whatever you do, pay for them. Pay for the parking. If they bought it, give the money back. And the other thing is, when they say rules are rules, oh, fool we. All these developers come in, and they always want something that's different from the rules, almost invariably. I challenge you to find one that they've just said, "Oh, yeah, this is the rule. This is the way we're going to do it." No, no, they always want more. So rules are rules is, it's a word of art. I think you should have found out back in 2013, and I imagine the new council members might want to just look up how it came about that we are in a position, and all the Ts are not crossed, and all the Is are not dotted, in which Palo Alto is in this kind of position. Thank you.
And Bob Moss to be followed by David Keller.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and Council members. I think it's time for a reality check. The statement that incentives are required in order to obtain BMR housing is absolutely false. For 35 years, Palo Alto required BMR housing with every housing development between 10 and 20 percent, and we gave no concessions. The only reason we're giving concessions now, over 750 units were built without concessions, BMR units. Talk to the Housing Corporation, I'll give you a list. The only reason we're giving concessions now is the stupid state law 65915. It is not necessary to give 100 percent to the concessions that are requested. We've been told by staff, Curtis Williams said this before he left, that you can cut back on the concessions that are requested. And since we can demonstrate that concessions were not required in order to provide housing in Palo Alto based on past history, you can justify that. The project as proposed is underparked. It's going to create significant traffic problems at the most congested intersection in the city. It is not appropriate at that density in that location, especially because the staff is grossly undercounting the occupancy of offices. It will not be four workers per thousand square feet. It will be closer to seven. So I suggest that you reduce the size of the office portion by at least 2,000 square feet, and put that space into parking on the site, because otherwise, we're going to have an awful mess in that intersection. And it's going to cause parking problems, traffic problems, and accidents, and perhaps even some fatalities, because people get tired driving around looking for parking spaces and they get frustrated. Bad project, bad proposal, not justified by reality.
David Keller to be followed by Ian Carroll.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council members. For the last eight years, my wife and I have both had the good fortune of being employed with local Palo Alto companies. We commuted daily from our home in San Jose. Within the last year, we've decided to become Palo Alto residents, and we currently reside in the Loma Verde, Loma Verde in the Midtown neighborhood. During our daily commute from San Jose, we drove by the property that will become 441 Page Mill Road. For many years, this property has been wasting away and in disrepair. It's an eyesore, and the timely commencement and execution of the project would be a net positive for the community. 441 Page Mill, as it is proposed, is an example of conscientious design and sound community planning. This allows the development, pardon me, the development features mixed use occupancy, which allows for higher utilization of the space than if either alone. The proximity to the Caltrain, easy access to Park Avenue, a bike boulevard, complemented by the pedestrian-friendly California Avenue, make this an ideal location to attract rail and bike commuters, and encourage the residents and occupants to patronize the local businesses. This project is an excellent example of smart growth, and it's consistent with the H2 goal codified in Strategies for New Housing in the Plannings Department Housing Element. I fully support this project and hope you will pledge your support as well. Thank you.
Ian Carroll, to be followed by Edie Keating.
I'm Ian Carroll. I live in College Terrace, fortunate enough to be able to afford a home in Palo Alto. I've worked in Palo Alto for 16 years over at Stanford, taking care of many of the residents here. I'm speaking in support of the project. I think that we need more affordable housing, and affordable housing doesn't just mean below-market rate housing. It means places that regular people can afford to rent as well as the below-market rate, because while there are many people like myself who can afford a home in Palo Alto, many of us also have relatives, parents, et cetera, who can't, and who want to live near their grandchildren, et cetera. I think I'm not particularly sympathetic to people who've spoken, who propose that despite the fact that this project has adhered to the regulations about parking spaces, that we should at the last minute, when things have passed many reviews, we should come up with a new set of rules about a new number of parking spaces that people should have. I think the change is always scary to people. I live on California Ave. Stanford's about to build hundreds of new homes, or at least dozens of new homes across the street. Change is always scary, but the truth is, is the place as it exists now is an eyesore, dilapidated. It's not really appropriate at that location for single-family homes the way many other places are. Something needs to be changed and developed there, and we shouldn't be changing the rules and ignoring state law because people are scared of the change. So I would speak, hopefully convincingly, in favor of approving the project, not after more red tape, but now. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Edie Keating to be followed by Martin Bernstein.
I support this project. I'm happy to see the density bonus for affordable housing being used. I see four housing units lost and 10 units gained, three of which will be permanently affordable. I am not a supporter of adding office space. I'm also not inclined to argue against proposals that are within zoning. I wish that this site was zoned for multifamily housing only. That's not the case. So since this could have been an all-office proposal, I am happy to see that this proposal includes housing. I would like to speak to a few of the objections you have heard. I use the animal doctor, and there are gaps in traffic. You can get out of there even at busy times of day. I also think that this is an acceptable, I think the transition between R1 and other types of use are important, and given that most of the homes on Pepper are now two-story, which, you know, and these, all over Palo Alto, we accept the transition between two-story and one-story homes within R1. So I think that between the two-story and the three-story transition here, that's again a one-story transition, and I think that's acceptable. I think I'm less afraid than some of the speakers tonight about the impacts of either traffic or of if this is underparked. I don't have an opinion about whether it is or not, but when there's a little bit of pain around either traffic or parking, that is part of what gets people to consider alternatives, which helps everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Bernstein to be followed by Herb Borak.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and Council. I'm Martin Bernstein, speaking as an individual and not as a member of any board or commission. The test of the council's goodwill and respect for the voters who voted that no PC planned community without a measurable and verifiable public benefit be approved. The council does not have that debate or issue tonight. This is not a PC project. It meets state law. It meets local law. What's the issue? I support approval of the project. Thank you.
Herb Borak to be followed by Lydia Koo.
Mayor Holman and Council members, I recommend that you either reject the project in its current form or request additional environmental review and additional economic review for the following reasons. First, there's no adequate cumulative analysis done of traffic. The environmental document refers to expected growth in traffic rather than actual projects, such as, for example, some of which were mentioned in today's Daily Post. Appropriate environmental analysis of traffic lists the actual projects that have been improved and expected, and states clearly that those projects have been included in the cumulative analysis. This traffic analysis does not do that because that has not happened. Therefore, it's a potentially significant effect that has not been mitigated and deserves an environmental impact report. Second, in regard to parking, the idea of reducing parking because it's mixed use, when this is the kind of location where people will not use their cars to go to work, they will either be working nearby, or they were taking public transit, either on buses, Bus Rapid Transit in El Camino or Caltrain, so there's no reason to reduce the amount of parking. Third, the analysis is not a true type of pro forma statement such as you receive for the Jay Paul project. The reason you don't get one of those is because when you did receive that kind of pro forma statement, the public couldn't use it to analyze it, to show you what the truth was of the project's economic effects. And so you need something on that level of detail and analysis in order to have a true economic version. Now finally, in regard to what you are getting, instead of the R1 zoning, you are getting new zoning, which gave the property owner nearly 11,000 square foot of office space, and what he wants is to put in a few units of housing to double that office space to almost, to over 21,000. Compare those minimum 80 employees with the three or four extra residential units. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia Koo to be followed by Joe Hirsch, and then our final speaker, Ruth Lowey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. My name is Lydia Koo. I live in the south part of town. The document that David is bringing up to you to pass to you is a short list of developments that are under construction at this time or going through review. My short list, my short list only contains 19 sites out of many more. Adding up all the square footages proposed on this list alone, it exceeds 400,000 square feet. We also know there is the Fries site that has been slated for more mixed-use commercial development. Our streets and neighborhoods cannot handle this sort of growth. As for satisfying jobs and housing balance, this city will never catch up to provide enough housing, since commercial space is continuously being built and at an extremely rapid rate. The staff report on this project states that traffic analysis, or the study, indicated at peak hours, they're estimating 33 to 34 vehicle trips and will not impact daily traffic. Well, you cannot, as our elected officials, only look at this project. You have to look at all the other projects on that list that's coming up, and what their traffic is going to do to the city and to that general location. Our streets are only that big, and so I want to end with saying that we're not playing SimCity here. These buildings that you approve will stay and impact the community for the next 30 to 50 years. You don't get a chance to just erase, delete, and start over again. So I urge you to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch to be followed by Ruth Lowey.
Mayor Holman, City Council members, in my opinion, this issue may be the very first test of what you have learned in the last two elections. The referendum on Maybell and the elections last year, when there was quite a dispute or contest between residentialists and pro-development people. Residents do not want projects of this type. This is much more dense than residents want. It is underparked. People don't want that either. They want projects to be fully parked. In the time allotted, I'm not an economist, and maybe Council Member Schmidt can address this later on, I have great difficulty understanding that the incremental value of the three concessions is merely $1.28 million. In the past year, before City Council or City and the school district got together on the renewal of the master lease at Coverley, I did have to look at a Plan B, which is looking at other commercial space in the area. It was $4 per square foot, net, 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 per month, roughly $50 per square foot. It was $4 per square foot, net, 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 per month, roughly $50 per square foot per year. $10,770 square feet at $50 is over half a million annually. If I'm off by maybe 20%, that brings it down to something over $400,000 a year. That's the added value of just the commercial space alone. That means that the affordable housing costs will be paid off in three or four years. And for the 30 years more that Lydia just mentioned, the developer will be reaping a major benefit at the expense of the residents of Palo Alto. Payback in that short period of time leads me to believe that the $1.28 million is totally underinflated, does not meet the requirements of state law. It will be much higher, and therefore, the value of the concessions or the value of the affordable housing costs at $1.85 million are vastly exceeded by the value of the concessions. Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Ruth Lowey, and we have additional speakers. Ruth Lowey to be followed by Rita Verhu, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name.
Ruth Lowey. My own experience over the years of working in Palo Alto is my office space has gotten smaller and smaller. I work in a cubicle now that's about six feet by 10 feet. So all of this increase in, in office space is going to result in more and more people and more and more cars, even if some of them are coming on public transportation. I think that's, that's a thing you need to consider. One other thing that I'm thinking about is, I'm very familiar with that intersection. It's dangerous. If you're going to have people coming in and out of that building, I don't see any barrier from the building that would keep people from accidentally crossing into the street or stepping into the roadway. And I think it would be really good if there was some protecting fencing or, or something, a decorative, of course, that can be added to the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Verhu. My apologies to be followed by Nielsen Buchanan.
Rita Verhul. So I thought I had read somewhere in the paper that this project was underparked. And it seems to me that almost every project that has been approved has been underparked. And I think the building will last much longer than 50 years. So we have a busy intersection with another underparked building that is going to create more problems that we're not going to be able to solve because some people will bike and some people will transit and some people will train, but the majority probably will not. The other thing that I found very interesting is that three of the 10 units will be below market housing. So that was seen as 30%. So you have one, two, and three-bedroom units. What percentage of the actual residential space is under market value? I don't think they're going to make the three-bedroom units under market value. They're probably going to be the one-bedroom units. And I'm really wondering how large those one-bedroom units are in relationship to the total amount of residential floor space. The other thing is, has anybody ever challenged the state law? I don't, I don't know that, but it seems like it is kind of a law that would be very detrimental to cities' interests. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies again for the last name. Nielsen Buchanan to be followed by Vijay Varma.
I'm Nielsen Buchanan. I live at 155 Bryant. Not many years ago, I got involved with a similar project known as 101 Litton. And that was my first real introduction to the kind of controversies that pop up in projects like this. And I did my best personal due diligence by listening to different people. I met with Boyd Smith and satisfied myself that there were two or three, four bumps in the road, but it would all work out okay. Years, so many, a couple of years later, frankly, three of those bumps in the road really would not be satisfactory if I knew as much then as I do now. The problems I have was my own nivotate. I just simply didn't ask the right questions. And still would chase down those little bumps in the road and some of it'll shake out, actually with permit parking. What are the bumps in roads on this project? One is that it's a tempest in a teapot about housing. Yeah, it's great to get a few new units of housing, but the job creation is outpacing job, housing creation by an incredible differential. So we've got to start thinking about big housing projects. If you want something to chew on, convert 27 University to housing, no office. That, that will solve a lot of the problems that speakers have been talking about. Ray Paul had a great suggestion when he produced his project to build, the public safety building and office. He made a statement in public that you don't want my project without residential permit parking because my tenants will simply spill over. So rather than fussing about what's not in this project, let me just put in a couple of conditions that could make it a little bit better and at least I won't make the same mistakes that I made in 101 Litton. How about a conditional use permit that really requires all the occupants to park in the building and not spill out into the neighborhoods? How about a permit parking to protect Ventura? How about really getting serious about cumulative impact on parking and traffic? Thank you.
Thank you. Vijay Varma to be followed by Mr. Pittan.
Hi, my name is Vijay Varma, and this is my first time here. And I have two or three points I want to ask. One is that we are all talking about affordable housing and bring more housing, and yet the project is providing 7% less than what is required under CS zoning, 53% versus 60%. And they are doubling on the office space, which is a problem in the city as it is. We have so much issue about the ratio of the office space to housing. And my next comment is that I am skeptical of any business plan which shows that my cost is more than my revenue getting in. So what they're telling us, that their cost to providing affordable housing is less than what they're going to recover by additional, the waivers they're asking. So I will be very careful about approving anything that has a negative in the business plan. So I feel that is disingenuous analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittan, to be followed by Matthew Harris.
Hi. Good evening. When I read all the documents which were on the website, I tried to get my arm around it, about the numbers. It's a nice project. It's wonderful language, harmonious word. But then I tried to get my arm around the numbers, and there were just not enough information. And I doubt that the city staff had the information. So, for example, in Palo Alto, construction costs are really determined by the ground. Let's say something costs $10 million. You have to pay. You have built nothing. So you built your first floor, it costs also 10 million, it's 20 million. You build the second floor, it's cost 10 million, but now your percentage goes down, so you make more money. So you add 10,000 square feet, and there is no dynamic scoring. There is no added profit which will subsidize the housing. So I think what's missing is dynamic score, scoring. They have three units for below-market. Let's say they go at 65%. So if they only would have, that brings in the rent of two normal ones. So there's only one free one for the benefit of everybody. So I think that should be at least deferred and should be looked over by, let's say, building superintendent of a large construction company like Bechtel or Hansel Farbs. They would know in a hurry what's wrong with this.
Thank you. Matthew Harris to be followed by, I think, our final speaker, David Sohrum.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here to speak as a member of the architecture profession. I am a licensed architect in the state of California. Our architecture and planning does have a scientific element to it. It's supposed to be based on other principles of science, like peer review, making inferences based on data, rational processes. This council's heard tonight testimony of half a dozen licensed architects in the state of California who are here tonight partly to conduct a peer review process. What we're saying is, this is a project, a high-quality project brought to you by a highly esteemed firm that's been in business in the city of Palo Alto for 30 years. It meets all of the planning guidelines. It's a high-quality project, mixed-use. It's exactly the kind of project that the city needs going forward. It's got, it's in a good location for housing. And if a project meeting all of the legal stated planning and zoning guidelines that complies with all of the existing rules cannot be approved, then what kind of society do we have anymore? Because that's not rational. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker, I reread this, David Schramm.
Good evening. Thanks for giving us this opportunity to address you. I'm here tonight because I think that when I read the staff report, I felt a sense of unreality. And the only way I can explain that is that having lived here in Palo Alto for more than 40 years and having read dozens of such staff reports, again and again, I've seen the kinds of predictions made by environmental impact statements, traffic projections, parking need requirements, prove to be inaccurate. And when I think about how I try to run my life in the small organization, public service organization in this community of which I am a part, I think that we tend to look for people whose track record we can rely upon based on their past performance. And planning and policymaking are essentially predictive enterprises. And unless we use sound science, we're going to be very unsuccessful in making our predictions because science is really the only way, as the speaker reformy alluded, by which humans have ever made predictions more successful than we can make by chance. And in this particular instance, I wonder, you know, has the firm that did the analyses of the environment, of the traffic and the parking demands, has that firm's record been examined by the people on our staff who hired them? Did they put forth a portfolio of successful prediction in other communities? And when we look at that kind of data, if we don't have some kind of reliability associated with it, then it becomes meaningless. So I'm here tonight to say, look, in this project, this particular project and in every other one that comes before you, please find some way to make sure that your data is more reliable than it has been in the past. Because after 40-plus years of living in this community, I'm living with the consequences of your and your predecessors' failed predictions about the consequences of the policies that you implemented based on the staff reports that you received from the consultants who got paid with my money to do them. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And we don't express outwardly our thoughts about someone else who's speaking so that everyone has an even playing field. The applicant will now have three minutes to conclude.
Thank you. There's a few comments that were made that I'd like to respond to. The first was relative to the BMR inclusionary housing. After Palmer, the court decision, the inclusionary housing doesn't apply to rental housing. That's what this is. That, that's why we're talking about state law, and these are restricted for 55 years. The second comment that I want to respond to is the notion that you can cut back on the incentives that are requested. There was actually a case out of the city of Berkeley called Wallimer, where the city council wanted to cut back the amenity space that was requested, and basically the court said you can't design from the dais. And I don't think the numbers support it in this case either. The third thing I want to touch on is the request for additional information. So there was a mention of the cumulative traffic analysis. That cumulative analysis is in the MND. Russ can probably answer any questions. We also have a traffic consultant available if you would like. The mention of who pays for the, who pays for the consultants? The city hires the consultants. It's actually the applicant who foots the bill for it. So, and then as far as the financial analysis, you have KMA, a very respected firm. They've been very careful, very thoughtful. They've gone through three different approaches. They did two at the request of PTC. They did a third. Each one showed the same. I think they, you know, they requested very specific information, construction estimates. They came back with follow-up questions. The applicant has provided all that very detailed information, and you have a reputable firm that's analyzing these. And as for the percentage of units, it is proposed that one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and a three-bedroom. So the range of different unit types are proposed for the below-market rate units. And then lastly, I think there was a mention about the safety and barriers. This is pushed back because of the county and all the different agencies that are involved. So it is set back a little bit further from the street. There are the trees there. So this, I think that may address the one-commenters item about safety. Anybody else? And we've, I'll let John come up and...
Thanks, Lee. She basically covered everything I wanted to say except for Louis. Lou, we're happy to work directly with you from our, from the trees that are, that we know will grow there. And if Louis, if you're not happy with the tree that's going to be growing in front of you, we can get another one. Thank you.
Thank you. And staff, wanted an opportunity to respond to anything that was said during the communications as well.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. Just a couple of notes. First, Mr. Borack talked about, well, he said that no cumulative analysis has been conducted of traffic, which is, is not accurate. But then he said that the analysis should use a list of upcoming projects or recent projects rather than a projections-based approach. And CEQA explicitly provides for either approach in an analysis of cumulative traffic. In this case, we've used a growth factor that we considered ample enough at the time the analysis was done to encompass all of the known projects in the area, including at that point, the Jay Paul project, which, as you know, is no longer, no longer on the table. So we figured that that analysis was sufficient. And we did discharge our obligation to look at the project's increment contribution to that cumulative picture. So as, as the applicant indicated, their traffic consultant is here, but staff can also attempt to answer any questions you have about that, either this evening or in subsequent discussions. Just a couple other things. There's been a number of references to the project being, quote, "underparked." I just wanted to clarify, the project has been in our office in the application process for over a year. It is making use of a provision in the code that allows for a reduction of up to 20% for a mixed-use project, although the applicant is not getting a full 20%. I know the council has indicated their desire to roll back some of these parking exemptions, and at least one of you has specifically identified that mixed-use exemption as one that they would like to consider rolling back. But the exemption is in our code. The applicant did make a request, and we felt that the request was warranted at less than the full 20%. So 91 spaces would be provided where 107 are required, and we believe that is sufficient. Was someone, oh, I think it was Mr. Buchanan made the point that there are so few dwelling units here that the benefits are far offset by the job creation that's included in the project. And I think that's a very valid and perceptive observation, and I would hazard to guess it's probably not what the legislature had in mind when they enacted the density bonus statute. But there it is. I mean, they have put in place this statute that allows an applicant to request concessions, including increases in commercial FAR, which is one of the concessions being requested this evening. Just one more thing. I was hoping that Reed could respond to Mr. Hirsch's question about the incremental value of concessions, and then we'd be happy to receive council questions and comments.
Yes, I think I'd like to try to respond to the question or the, the comment raised about the adequacy of the $1.284 million estimate of the incremental value between the proposed project and the CS zoning alternative. Just to clarify, the $1.284 million incremental value is the net incremental value after you take into consideration the development costs. So just to reiterate a number that I think I had expressed during the presentation, the estimate that we had made of the incremental gross value prior to considering the development cost was about 9.6 million between the two alternatives. And as I was explaining the, the fact that the proposed project requires the expensive underground parking garage and environmental remediation, after you take those costs into consideration, it results in a net value of 1.28 million. Just clarification.
Just one, maybe clarification for staff, maybe city attorney or director of planning. We had before is this project, and actually, could the city clerk... We have before us this project, and actually, could the city clerk change the on-screen to what the project description is? Would be helpful perhaps for folks. We have before us the density bonus issue, but we have also the project as a whole. So you mentioned, for instance, the parking exception. So how can the council look at this project?
Well, thank you, Mayor Holman. Just briefly, and I'll let Cara or Molly pile on here, but our feeling is that the council is pretty constrained by the density bonus statute with regard to the project's request for concessions and, in that sense, the development program. But there are the design enhancement exceptions and the parking exception, which are areas where the council could differ from the applicant's request and potentially deny or ask those to be modified in some way. And I appreciate, you know, your thoughts on specifics and an opportunity to respond to questions on the specifics, if that's the direction you're heading in. It's a little hard to separate the site and design of the project as a whole from the concessions that are asked for, and so that would be more challenging. But I hope that I addressed your question.
You did, and I don't see a city attorney wanting to speak up. So the only other thing I will address at this point in time is we are at 9:07. We were supposed to start item seven at nine. So I don't know quite at this moment how many council members have questions, but let's say if we went to this project, let's say till 10:00, and we did an hour for number seven, and then continued the rest of that discussion, that means we would be taking up our closed session at 11:00. So just want to make council members aware of that, and if there's any disagreement with that, then now would be the time to state that. I also want to see that, because the item number seven was posted between 9:00 and 10:30, that in that timeframe, we will hear from any member of the public who wants to speak to that item. That item will be most likely considered under two separate meetings, so you will have another opportunity to speak to that item. So tonight is not your only chance. So I hope that gets all the issues on the table. Have I overlooked anything? So, okay. So I have one light from one council member, and I'd like to know offhand, how many council members have questions? Just from a show of hands. Pretty much everybody, so, okay. Why don't we take abbreviated, an abbreviated round at questions? So just a couple of questions apiece, and then we'll probably run to council comments and questions combined. So Councilmember Nish, you had your light on first, so a couple of questions, please.
I do, and they'll be brief, and I'm actually going to try a motion, Mayor Holman. I want to, in particular, talk about the fact that throughout, as much as we might like it to be different, my experience is state law will trump our local politics. And I don't know of Cara Silver if you're the right person to respond, but let's talk about what would happen, since we're going to probably expose ourselves to risk if we deny it. What would, what would be the outcome?
I'm going to interject here just for a second. I was looking for a couple of, a couple of questions first, so one round of questions before motions and comments, so...
That's a question.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
So if we, if we were to deny this, and that, that's a very clear question.
Thank you, Cara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So it, of course, depends on what grounds you deny the project. So if, if you deny it based on density bonus, you will have to make certain findings. And so the court will look at the findings for denial and determine whether those findings can be made. And there are very specific findings that are required in order to deny a concession. If you deny it based on some of the land use issues in the Record of Land Use Act, then the court will look at whether findings in that area are sufficient.
So I'm going to suggest at this point, if I get a second to it, that we move the motion to get us to the point where we can actually have a discussion about it. And I know you want a round of questions, Mayor Holman, so if you want me to hold on that until you have the round, I'm glad to. But I'd be also glad to get us started on a discussion of where we're going with it.
If you would hold on it until we do just one round of a couple of questions apiece, and I promise I'll come back to you. Councilmember Berman, two questions.
I'll try to get the maximum value out of my two questions. I'm trying to pick the two best. So the analysis right now shows that there's a net project value increase of approximately $1.3 million from the proposed project versus what would have been the best use under existing zoning. And I think I already know the answer to this question, but does state law indicate at all a city's ability to restrict or, you know, make decisions that would lower or, is there any maximum or minimum allowable increase in project net value that state law gets at, alludes to? What are the, and I'll try to make that a two-part, one question. To what extent can we, you know, do, are we able to lower the square footage of the project to reach something closer to a equal net project value? Or I guess a net project increase of zero?
I'll take a try at that. We're, we're hampered, as Reed indicated in his presentation, by the fact that there isn't really a definition in the state law of what that terminology is about net housing cost. Is that what it was? Affordable housing cost. And we've really only analyzed the two projects here, the project with the concessions and the zone project without the concessions. It would be possible to analyze other, other projects or hypothetical projects, but I'm not sure what that would add.
Well, I guess the question, I mean, so let me be more clear. If I were to say right now, I won't approve this project unless it's, the office space is decreased by 1,000 square feet, and, and we were to do an analysis that showed that that still compensated the developer for the cost of the affordable housing, which I think it probably would off napkin calculations, is that, would that be legally defensible? Is that allowed by us in this situation, or no?
Yes, you would have to have substantial evidence in the record to support that. And at this point, we don't have the substantial evidence. If you wanted to go in that direction, what I would suggest is that you request the consultant to come back with that analysis, in which case you, you know, if the report indicated, you would have substantial evidence.
Okay. Thank you. I'll use that for now.
Councilmember DuBois.
I have several questions, but I'll keep it short and see if other people ask some of the others. So on page four of the consultant's report, there's an on-menu concession option that, but it doesn't show that you did the analysis for that with the on-menu concessions. Did you consider that? Was there a reason it didn't go further?
We, yes, to answer your question, we did analyze a scenario with the on-menu concessions only. We, we did not provide all the detail behind that. But suffice it to say that, that having done that analysis, the conclusion of our analysis was essentially the same as the development cost approach, is what I was describing before, that the three incentives are in fact needed.
Yeah. I mean, did that analysis include parking allowances, that you would not have to build a garage? Do you know?
I believe it did, but I don't recall exactly.
Okay. So no traffic report was provided in the packet, just a summary. So where is the traffic report that was done by RKH? I did see the summary. And was Park Boulevard excluded from the traffic study? And if so, why wasn't it included?
Thank you, council member. We, we do have the traffic study. It's available in the background file. It's a technical document with lots of traffic counts and interesting-looking graphics like that. Happy to provide it to the council if you wish, copy.
Do you know about Park Boulevard? It looked like they only looked at three intersections.
Pardon me?
It looked like they only looked at three intersections, and it did not include Park Boulevard, where a lot of projects are happening.
It did look at the closest intersections to the site that we thought would be impacted. So if any intersections were going to be impacted by the project, these were the ones, in our view, that were going to be affected. The study is, Russ tells me, the study is also available on our website.
Right. And the third one was, can you give examples where we've given the mixed-use parking exception in the past? And do you know how, if we predicted that correctly or incorrectly in any of those examples?
Off the top of my head, I cannot, but I'd be happy to research that for you and give you some examples. It's a very common request in Palo Alto and a very common practice in traffic and parking analysis generally. Most jurisdictions have some provision for reduced parking requirements where there's a mix of uses that peak at different times of the day.
Yeah. It was really to one of the speaker comments about, we do those things, but, I mean, have we ever followed up to see how well we're able to predict whether the amount of sharing, you know, we use is correct or not?
Again, time and resources permitting, I'd be happy to follow up on that and provide you with some information.
Okay. Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Just two simple questions. Traffic analysis, you hold up a big sheet of papers. I guess we haven't seen that. But the VTA Palo Alto model that has been used, and I believe was used on the 195-page mill, and so is the basis for analysis, projects over the next 20 years that there will be about a 1% growth per year in traffic at that intersection. Now, we have been given a report, the existing conditions report, which we're supposed to be using for discussions tonight and on the comp plan. And there, it clearly states that the actual traffic increase between 1998 and 2014 has averaged at that intersection and most intersections near El Camino, 3% per year. Now, that seems to be a substantial discrepancy, that if we, as council members, have to deal with traffic, we should be using the numbers given us in the existing conditions report. Is that accurate?
Councilmember Schmidt, I don't have the existing conditions report in front of me to refer to, so I will have to get back to you on that question. We did project significant increases in traffic volumes looking forward from the present day or the date at which the analysis was conducted to the year 2035, in this case.
And it's about 1% per year, and you've been using that for 10 years, but the 10-year actual data is closer to 3%.
If I can interject, we did not use a straight 1% per year. We used volumes that were taken from the, the traffic model that you referred to, and they vary in different locations. So in the two intersections we analyzed, there were different percentage increases that were directly result of consulting the regional model.
Right. But let's look back at that and compare to what you have given us as actual. So traffic is an issue. Second issue is parking. If you look at the last page of the staff report, packet page 271, there's one-page summary of the parking analysis. Now, I can see that you're using mixed-use, and the table shows the variance of uses between residential and office, and looks reasonable. But at the top, it says, under commercial, peak rate 3.45, for retail, 3.03. And that gives you your peak demand. Now, the city code says we're using four. How can we assume, because of a reference to a national study done in 2010, that we should be using a third less than our code requires?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I believe we answered this in response to the questions we got from Councilmember DuBois before the meeting. These are demand figures taken from data sources that are in line with the code section that provides for this exception. So in the section of the city zoning ordinance where it provides for this mixed-use exception, it actually outlines what methodology and type of data sources should be used to justify this exception, and this analysis is directly in keeping with that. We have to remember that the demand, parking demand is not just a factor of the trips that are generated, total trips, but also there's a percentage of those trips that would not always be by automobile. So there might be some adjustment there, and I would have to dig into this more deeply and get back to you with a fuller answer. But I wanted to assure you that this analysis we presented is entirely in keeping with the section of the code that provides for this mixed-use exception.
So you're saying there are two sections of the code. One is the mandate for parking, which is four. And then we have an exception in another part of the code that says, oh, on your discretion, you can use 3.03.
That section does not provide a ratio. It provides a suggestive methodology for justifying this exception. We considered the methodology and thought that it was warranted in this case.
Okay. Would be helpful.
Councilmember Burt. I'm being rigid here, so, Councilmember Burt.
And can our questions also be directed to the applicant or just staff at this time?
Questions can be directed at the staff, the applicant, or any member of the public if, if you wish.
Okay.
And we're limiting to two questions at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I have a question for the applicant's attorney in this regard. You mentioned that there was case law that cities can't cut back on the bonuses that are proposed. So if, if you had proposed twice the bonus that you have here, are you saying that under case law, we still would not be able to cut that back?
So I, I mean, I would have to go back and look at the details, but in the case, the Wallimer, the city of Berkeley case, there was a very large amenity space in the project. And the idea was, people don't need that much amenity space. They don't need a pool. They don't need what they're proposing. And what the court said is, you know, I don't know about how fine, I mean, the fine tune of what you're getting at, I don't think has been decided by the court. But the generality of you can't design from the dais, you need to look at the project that's been proposed with the incentives as they have been proposed, and if they are necessary, state law requires you to approve them unless you can make, based on substantial evidence, one of those three findings.
Yeah, but you asserted that we couldn't adjust those bonuses based on this case law.
Correct. And I stand by that.
And so my, my question to you is, so if you had come forward with bonuses that were twice this, you'd still be making that same argument?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thanks. And then, I guess at this time, I want to return, I have other questions that I, I think I'm going to find necessary to ask later, but I want to return to actually the issue that Councilmember Schmidt raised about the traffic projection. And Director Gittelman, you had said you'd have to go back and look at the existing condition report, or I guess that was the one that you're referring to needing to go back. But basically, if Councilmember Schmidt is correct, that we've been having 3% per year growth at this intersection, and that this projection is assuming 1% per year, it sounds like we don't have the ability to have that clarification tonight. And yet, if that was accurate, to me, that would be a very substantial issue that would raise my concerns about whether the impact analysis is adequate. So is there, is there a way to have that resolved tonight?
Councilmember Burt, I would, I can't comment on either side of that equation. I would have to go back and refer to the existing conditions report and other data in our shop about traffic volumes at that intersection over time to look at the first part of that question, and then I would have to consult with my traffic experts on the second part of your question and get back to you.
Well, but my question wasn't about whether you... Well, but my question wasn't about whether you'd get back to me, but it's whether you can get back to us tonight or not, in order for us, and it sounds like the answer is you can't, and that's what I wanted to clarify.
That's correct. I would have to get back to you on another evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Wobach, a couple of questions?
Yes, one speaker suggested that we add an additional conditional use permit to this project, to perhaps do something like require that anyone working in, living in, or visiting the project actually parked at the site of the project, in the project's onsite parking. Do we have the leeway to add something like that to this project?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think we do have the ability to adjust or add to the conditions of approval within reason. I would just caution about adding a condition of approval that it might not be hard to monitor or enforce. But if you could think of some way that it could be structured to be easily monitored and enforced, a condition like that, I think is, we could consider adding something like that to this, this project.
Councilmember Scharf, a couple of questions?
Yeah, thank you. So I think my major concerns are also traffic and parking. In approving the mixed use, I mean, you've been applying direct for a long time, I mean, it makes total sense to me when I look at the, the usage chart here, but could you tell us a little bit more about, you know, in your experience, has this worked? And, you know, is this the kind of, is this the kind of mixed sharing where you have residential at different times and commercial, that this actually works, or does it, we have no data on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. I think one of the councilmembers earlier was looking for Palo Alto-specific data and Palo Alto-specific projects. If that's what you're asking for?
No, no, I'm asking for, in your experience as a planning director, and, you know, you've been around a long time, and I don't see why Palo Alto would be any different than anywhere else, frankly, how this would work. And if you do think it would be different, you know, say so, but I think it wouldn't. And I guess I wanted your, you know, you approved this, so I wanted your take on it.
Yes. As I indicated earlier, this is a very typical kind of provision to reduce parking requirements when you have a mix of uses. In my experience, it is warranted, and it does work. These types of uses peak at different times of the day or night, so that it's not anticipated that they would, all the parking spaces would be filled for both uses at the same time. And some modification or adjustment is typical, and I believe warranted.
And I guess one other question is, I remember that it goes back at least to the 90s, when people have had this, in terms of mixed-use parking exemption. You know, you've been in planning a lot longer, and I was just curious as to, you know, how long has this been tested and tried? Do you know? I mean, does it go back more than the 90s, or do you remember when they came out with this?
I don't, I'm sorry.
My two questions.
Okay, I just have a couple as well. One of them has to do with parking, and then one of them has to do with something not brought up. The one I have to do with parking is, the parking that is being provided, does not or does take into consideration the parking at the curb that's being removed?
It does not. Yeah, we're trying to think if we know how many spaces are being removed at the curb. Maybe the applicant could answer that question. Off the top of our heads, we can't recall.
The reason I ask this quickly is because I was by there even on Sunday, and the curb was fully parked, so if we're eliminating those spaces. The other question is one that nobody else has brought up, but it's one that troubled me when I went through the plans, is the street trees. And understanding that the county doesn't want trees within seven feet of the curb, but where these trees are located, they're right up by the street, by the building, and my experience in project review and Grand Boulevard plan and everything else, does have street, excuse me, has street trees on the outboard side, in other words, the street side of the sidewalk, and creates a canopy, or an arcade, if you will, for pedestrians. So I'm not sure why that wasn't required here. This seems like it would be a very dangerous, unsafe, and unappealing path for pedestrians. So can you tell me why this wasn't produced in this way?
Staff spent a great deal of time working with the applicant and all of their team members on trying to achieve a scenario where we could get the trees between the street and the sidewalk. That was certainly our goal. The location of the existing utility simply prevented the ability to do that. The building would have had to be pushed back significantly further, and then the sidewalk pushed to be able to get the trees to be on the other side of the sidewalk. The location of the existing utilities, there's many running through there, that it's incredibly cost prohibitive to relocated them. The applicant can probably speak in much greater detail about this, but we looked at this with our internal, both water, gas, wastewater, and electric utility departments, and with their engineering team, and it was not feasible to place the trees closer to the street.
I think Mr. Northway did want to respond to that, and I'm recalling some comments about 261 Hamilton, so, Mr. Northway, did you want to make a comment on that, a response?
I believe that the number of parking spaces that will be removed by county policy is about five, because there are some driveways that'll also get closed off. In terms of the street trees, I had always thought that the trees that were there would stay there, but because of county policy, and I, with all due respect, welcome to our world, this is what we've been dealing with, with this project, because the county has very stringent restrictions on what they will allow in their easement, and trees are one thing which we were quite surprised to find out are not allowed by the county. That's why we worked with city staff and came up with, we'll push the building back so we can get street trees on the applicant's property, because they weren't allowed in the Santa Clara County right away.
Thank you for those responses. And Councilmember Niss, I assured you I would come back to you, so that's what I'm doing now.
Thank you. Because I think, at this point, we need to get something at least out here that we can discuss. I'm glad to move the entire, or I'm glad to read the entire suggestion, the entire recommendation, but let me see whether or not there's a second, if I just simply say I'm moving the recommendation, and then I can speak to it.
Hearing no second?
Hearing no second, then I will make a couple of comments if I, and I'll just hold them.
You're welcome to make, you're welcome to make comments if you care.
So I have a couple of concerns, and I want to mention, first of all, this is, I think we really have a test case tonight about density bonus, there's no question. This is not a PC, and I think that's really important for those of you who are here tonight to know. This is not a PC. This is, as I see it, this is a new law, in many ways, that has been pushed pretty hard by the state after they dissolved the redevelopment districts within the last year and a half. There's a great deal of concern throughout the state of California about affordable housing. Therefore, the density bonus has really become front and center at this point. I hope we can at least give a clear message tonight regarding where we are, because I know that Berkeley has gone through this already. I don't know if any other, the applicant might say, if any other cities have gone through this yet, other than Berkeley.
I mean, communities all over the state are really struggling with this. There is a couple other cases that deal specifically with state density bonus law. They're about different issues than you're dealing with tonight, but it's definitely something that all councils are grappling with and having a hard time embracing.
Right, yes. And I've been hearing that from, from others as well. And I don't think any of us want to think this is headed toward a lawsuit, but I would indicate that, in this case, as I said earlier, I'd be surprised if state law doesn't trump what we want to do as a local governance board who sets policy.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
This is the first off-menu project we have had under the state density bonus law. And I think it's important that there be clear understanding from the council, from the public as a whole, what we're doing. I guess, on the face of it, it is an astounding concession that for three BMR units, which have a value beneath market units of maybe four to $500,000, granting above zoning 10,000 square feet of office, which probably has a value of 600,000, 700,000. Now, that's a big discrepancy, per year, yeah. That's a big discrepancy. It's enough to startle you and say, gee, how did this work out? And the model used to justify it is sort of mystifying. As the presentation pointed out this evening, the original zoning had residential space for 13 units. The goal was mixed use, and the original zoning would have allowed 13 residential units and office space. But in order to get the economic justification, the assumption had to be made, that gee, they'll only build seven units. So they were playing with the zoning by reducing the model, by reducing the housing part of mixed use. Now, maybe it's okay to do that, but it is important, then, that the economic assumptions used make sense. And you end up making the assumption that in order to get three additional units, which are BMR from seven to 10, which accounts for less than 10% of the total square footage in the building, but you have to impose over 30% of the cost of the garage. So it baffles me how we can accept that pro forma and say, oh, yes, this is a way of raising issues about traffic, parking, densities, jobs over housing, and use that as a justification.
Councilmember Philseth?
Thank you very much. Can we have the slide 10 from the city staff presentation up, please? Page 10.
Page 10, sorry.
That one. So this model is a pretty important piece of this puzzle. So I want to make sure I understand it. And I was going to try to point here, but I guess pointers, pointers don't work up there, right? So I want to make sure I understand this. So the income stream, total NOI, that is the total annual rent from the project. Is that right? So that's the total revenue?
That's correct.
Okay. And you divide that in the, in the first alternative by 5.59% to get the gross value of the project, right? And then subtract from that the upfront costs, and that gives you the total net project value. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Well, just one quick clarification, the 5.59% is a blended rate. It assumes a separate percentage for each land use.
I understand. You've weighted it by the land use of each one, okay. And that, and that gives you a net present value of, of at least the value of the off-menu project is 2.8 million. That's the value of the project?
Yes, the net, the net value, correct.
The value of the project, okay. It's a big project. All right. Okay. So the algorithm we just described, the NOI over the, that's the capitalization rate, is that what that 5.59 number is?
Correct, correct.
And so that's the formula for the net present value of a fixed annuity, okay? So what we have here are the first year, the current rental rates, right? What did you assume about how these would change in the future, and where is that in the model?
The model does not make projections for what, what will happen with rents in the future.
So you assume that the income stream is fixed for the future?
No, the model does not make any assumptions with regard to the direction of rents in the future.
Well, yes, it does, because what you've got there, depending on what's in the cap rate, is the net present value of a fixed annuity, which means that it's $953,944 every year from now till infinity.
Well, let me express it this way. When, in real estate, when you're estimating the value of an income stream, you apply a cap rate typically, which is what we've done. The cap rates are determined by the market, essentially. They're based on what properties are buying and bought and sold for. And of course, as we know, the cap rates change over time. So the cap rates that we've assumed, which result in the blended rate that you referred to, were intended to reflect the current market for these uses. And those purchases of other properties reflects what other investors would project in terms of future growth of rents.
Okay. So you use comparables from the industry, basically, to get those?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm curious, can you explain a little more what exactly, I mean, I know you use comparables, but can you explain a little bit what exactly goes into the cap rate? The reason I ask is, I, I hope you'll be patient here, right, is that the whole model is very sensitive to exactly what that number is, right? So I think it bears, you know, I want to understand what's exactly inside it.
Well, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out a way to explain it any better than the way I just did, which is to say that the...
Maybe I can try.
Okay.
There is a sizable body of literature, some of which I've brought with me, that says the cap rate is equal to the risk-adjusted cost of capital minus the growth rate. And that's where the growth in income projection is. It's inside the cap rate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so, as I understand it, that means the cap rate is given by three components, actually. Because the risk-adjusted rate of capital, you calculate by taking the risk-free rate of capital, adding a risk premium, and then subtracting the rate of growth, the rental income. So, you know, I took a shot at trying to calculate that, and I looked up some numbers. So I gather that an industry standard measure of the risk-free rate is the 10-year T-bill, which is currently just under 2%. And the risk premium, I gather that a typical estimate for commercial real estate is a few percent. I've got a report here that says 3.5% for apartment properties in Q3 of 2014. Is that, is that sort of the right ballpark?
The premium for risk?
The risk premium, yes.
You know, that really varies from one's land use to another and one's location to another. It's hard to answer that question with...
I understand. So, but let me try with sort of the example I got from a moment. So if you add the 2% to the 3.5%, you get a risk-adjusted cost of capital of about 5.5%, between 5 and 6%, something like that? Does that sort of make sense?
I'm with you. I'm following your...
Now, I have here the Diet and Bacha study, done this year for the downtown cap. And in it, they report on the growth of... And in it, they report on the growth of rental income, commercial rental income in Palo Alto over the last decade, okay? And this is for downtown, so it's probably a little higher downtown than elsewhere. But they report that over the last decade, including during the downturn, the average rental growth in office space here was about 11%, okay? So in terms of that cap rate number, there is no way to subtract 11% from 5.5% and get 5.59%. Even if you assumed 5% growth rates in rental income, which is, you know, I was talking to Greg Schmidt, we estimated the growth of his office in California Avenue at about 5% a year for the last 15 years. My house is appreciated at probably 7% a year for the last 21 years, okay? Even if you assume it's 5%, there's no way to subtract 5% from 5.5% and get 5.59%. So here's the real issue, okay? The model you've got here, these models are simplified models, okay? They're shortcuts for a real discounted cash flow analysis, okay? And the problem is, the simplified model doesn't work here, okay? And I have a huge body of literature on that, too, and I'll read a little, this is a study from, this is a paper from the Zell-Lurie Real Estate Center at Horton Business School. "The intelligent application of the cap rate methodology will generate a value, the evaluation, that is consistent with a detailed discounted cash flow analysis." The model evaluation applies only if the discount rate, and that's the risk-adjusted rate of capital, right, is relatively large compared to the income growth rate, okay? And I've got a couple more here. If the growth rate is more than the discount rate, which arguably it is here, the valuation model gives you a negative value, which is inapplicable. And this one says, "Only a full discounted cash flow analysis will yield a credible and reliable valuation." So I know you guys didn't break out the individual components of the cap rate, you looked at industry comparables. But I'm going to suggest that industry comparables don't work in a high-growth, moderate-risk situation like we have here in Palo Alto, especially when interest rates are low. You have to do the accurate analysis. Now, I was curious what you would get if you actually did do the accurate analysis. And so what I did was, I wish I had the pointer here, I backed out a growth rate from the cap rate there, so it became a true discount rate, a risk-adjusted cost of capital. And, you know, I tried a few different things, but for the moment, I just left, for the first pass, I just left yours, I just left it at yours, 5.59% and 5.82%, okay? But instead of using $953,944 as a fixed income stream, you know, I used a formula for net present value of an increasing annuity and assumed, in the first case, that rental rates would grow 5% per year, okay? And it's interesting what happens when you do that, okay? For one thing, the value of the project, assuming 5% growth and mid-5% risk-adjusted cost of capital, is not $2.8 million, but $15.59 million. And the value increment is not 1.284 million, but 6 million. And I tried it with 7% instead of 5%. In that case, the valuation of this project goes from not 2.18 million, but 28.1 million. And the value increment goes to 10.6 million. Then I tried it with a couple other stabs at the discount rate. I tried it with 5.5%. Finally, I tried it with the BBB corporate bond rate, which is currently 3.6% in this country. And the numbers there go from, instead of 15 and 28 million for the value of the project, they go to 29 and $47 million for the value of the project. And the value increment, depending on whether you're at 5 or 7% growth rate of rental income, goes to 11 and $17 million. And, you know, the reason I sort of looked at this was because I looked at the first number of $2.8 million as the value of this project, and I went, boy, that seems like not very much for a big project like this, okay? And so I think that's the culprit. I think that we've sort of used a model that's not quite appropriate for the exact circumstance in Palo Alto, right? So, and I think this is really important, because these numbers are the basis for deciding whether the city is legally required to grant the off-menu concessions. The current model gives the wrong answer, so we can't use it to make that judgment, right? I think what we should do is a discounted cash flow analysis that correctly accounts for the rental growth, right? And I don't think that's going to be terribly hard. I think, you know, the way to do that is to split out the growth and use local growth rates. I mean, I don't think we should use 11% and so forth, but I think we should do that, and discount it by a pure risk-adjusted cost of capital. Let's see. So one of the options from the staff in this presentation was that one of the things we could do is request a pro forma, a pro forma that would support the off-menu concessions. I think that's a good idea to do that. And, you know, these are my numbers, right? But I'm pretty sure that such an analysis would find substantial evidence that this magnitude of area expansion, the off-menu concessions, would not be required in order to provide for the cost of the below-market rate units. I haven't made a motion yet, right? Are we going to have more commentary on this, or should I finish here?
So here's where we are. I believe, Director Gittleman, your light is on. Do you want to speak? And then the other thing I would say is, we are at seven minutes till 10. We had, I'm trying to get this item to either conclude, which doesn't look very likely, but possible, or be continued, so that we can get to item number seven. So first, Director Gittleman.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, Councilmember Philseth. You know, of course, we would love to see the calculations and the sources you were citing, just in the interest of transparency. I'd love to be able to provide that to our consultant, to the applicant, and everyone to have an opportunity to take a look at it and get back to you with a supplemental analysis. I think just to be, for interest of full disclosure, thus far, the applicant has paid the cost of Kaiser Marston's analysis. I think in this case, it would be incumbent on the city to pay the cost of the supplemental analysis. We've already had the applicant pay for three different methodologies. With the fourth methodology, I would say that it's probably on our nickel, but we'd be happy to ask that that be done and come back to you at a later date with the results of that review.
So Councilmember Philseth, did you want to make a motion?
So I guess I will make a motion. Boy, I got to figure out the right language here. I move to accept the staff's initial recommendation and proposal that... Where is it here? I don't have it. Where's the slide I'm looking for? Thank you very much, thank you very much. I move that we request additional analysis information on pro forma supporting off-menu concessions, and particularly that we use a discounted cash flow analysis using local rates of commercial space growth and reasonable estimates for risk-adjusted cost of capital to do another calculation of this.
Do we have a second? Vice Mayor Schmidt is seconding. Councilmember Philseth, you'll need to look at the screen and make sure the motion captures your thoughts.
So initial recommended proposal, we should be very clear that we're not...
Can you guys switch one of the screens for us?
I'm looking, yeah, can, it should say, "Initial recommended proposal to request additional pro forma off-menu concession analysis." And use a discounted cash flow approach, applying local rental rate growth, and reasonable risk-adjusted cost of capital figures.
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Is it clear enough that we're not accepting the proposal at this time?
Yes, and Councilmember Philseth, and I look to Director Gittleman for this, too. The language that says, "Accept the staff's initial recommended proposal to request additional pro forma," I believe that's to accept one of the offered options.
That's right. I believe you could just start the motion with, "Request additional pro forma of off-menu concessions."
Okay. Move to, yeah, there we go. Yes.
Okay. Do you need to speak to your motion any further?
I have lots more comments on this project, but maybe it's late and...
I think probably when this comes back, that will be one of the determinant factors, if you don't mind. Vice Mayor Schmidt, you have to speak to your second.
Yeah, maybe just a practical question. Do we need to add to the motion that the city would pick up the cost?
No, that's not necessary.
Okay, it's clear. I would ask for a friendly amendment to see if you could add a short sentence at the end saying, "A traffic analysis update would be helpful."
Can you propose some language for that?
Yeah, "Traffic analysis update would be helpful."
If I can suggest, I think Councilmember Schmidt, you were suggesting that the staff review the projected rate of growth and compare it to the historic growth rates for that intersection at Page Mill and El Camino.
Good, yes, that would be fine.
If you could repeat that language, please, for the city clerk to capture. And then need to ask if the maker of the motion would accept that, if you recall the language?
I accept the motion.
Okay. So Director Gittleman, could you repeat that, please?
Well, that's a traffic analysis here.
It may be, not yet.
Staff to review, staff to review the rate of growth assumed at Page Mill and El Camino to the historic growth rate at that location. Yeah, it should say rate of traffic growth, I guess. To the historic growth rate.
Councilmember Sharif, you had your light on the longest and prior to the motion. Did you like to speak to this motion?
I would like to speak to the motion. I guess there's a couple things, first of all. If we're going to send it back for more analysis, you know, one of the things we went through with the water board, for instance, was we never got a decision out of them forever. They kept sending it back. And I'm concerned that we don't act that same way. It seems inappropriate and unfair to the applicant. It's one thing to say, no, we disagree for these reasons. It's another thing to... So I guess I want to know how soon this will come back to us, first of all, I guess. And how many times can we send it back? If it comes back and the analysis still shows that it, the analysis still shows that they're entitled to the concessions, then where do we go from there? Are we then opening this up and having all these other discussions? So I really, I guess, want a sense of when this comes back, and do we have an unlimited amount of time that we, every time it comes to us, we can say, no, we want something else?
So the first question would be to the planning staff, and the second question is either to your colleagues, or then I think you were looking to the city attorney.
City attorney.
So first, well, I think we have a lot of lights on right now.
So as to the entitlement processing time, typically, the time to act on an application begins to run upon the approval of the environmental document. What I'm hearing from the council is that you're not prepared to certify the environmental document at this point, so the Permit Streamlining Act doesn't, hasn't yet started running. That being said, of course, there is a reasonable gloss to all of this, and generally, cities have a reasonable amount of time, up to generally about a year, to prepare the environmental documentation. And however, if there are extenuating circumstances and change in circumstances, of course, that year can move out.
So we haven't talked as a council, frankly, of why we're not ready to approve the negative declaration. So I think the only thing in the motion that would indicate that we're not is the, because Councilmember Philseth's motion just goes to the concessions. And I don't believe that in, does that implicate the negative declaration, the concessions?
No, it doesn't, but I thought there was a friendly amendment.
So that's what I was going to get to, which is the traffic. So is the traffic analysis we're going to do, would that, staff's already recommended the negative dec, is that going to implicate the negative, whether or not we would approve a negative declaration or not, the further analysis you're going to do?
We were actually, we're not going to do any additional analysis. We were going to compare the data that Councilmember Schmidt suggested that we look at to the assumptions in the analysis that's already been done, and comment on the variance, if there is any, between those assumptions.
So would that and further analysis of the existing data that you're going to compare, could that, I mean, could that change staff's recommendation on a negative declaration? Could that do that?
I think if we found that there was a basis to question the assumptions in the study, it could call into question that earlier analysis. I'm not expecting to find that, but if it did, that's where we would be.
Okay, so the reason we're waiting on approving the negative declaration tonight is for that further analysis. And what could do it is whether or not it calls into questions assumptions we've made. I just want to make sure I understand this. Okay. So then, the next question I really have is, I guess, about how this works from a legal perspective. I mean, it sort of strikes me that we've done this. We're having a quasi-judicial proceeding in which we've created a record. We have created a procedure that is apart from the normal procedure, which is you have to give us your pro forma if you use an off-market concession. That's not in the state law, right? That's a procedural hurdle that we've done. We then hired our own expert, who has great credentials and, you know, we think highly of, and we've used in the past, and says all of that. And we've asked him not once, but twice, to come back with another analysis. So it's sort of like you're in court with your own expert, and your expert says, no, this meets it. And he says it twice. So now we say, no, we don't like the answer. Go back and get another answer. So when you go through that process, I guess, the question is, is I want to make sure that we've then asked all of the analysis that we're going to ask the expert to do. Because if we come back and it says, yes, I think to send the expert back again would be inappropriate. So I think I would encourage my colleagues, if there's other information you want, I think we then need to ask for that information and make sure we do that tonight. And I think that's my plea, is let's ask for everything we want. Then I think it's important to talk a little bit about Councilmember Philseth's approach to the cap rates. So cap rates are set by the market. I mean, I think, I don't know, would you agree? I mean, that's what determines a cap rate.
Yes, I would agree.
Yes, I would agree.
It's not, it's not the analysis that Councilmember Phil Seth did. No one does an analysis like that. And if your analysis is better, you should buy the real estate, because you'll make money. Because the market sets the cap rate. And if you think it's overpriced or underpriced to the market, you can arbitrage that and make a lot of money. So, and there are particular cap rates in Palo Alto for what things have sold for. So, I actually would encourage our expert to look at the Palo Alto cap rates and say, "This is the market, and that's what drives it." I frankly think that when you start adding what Councilmember Phil Seth did, which is a good academic study, and it's, I mean, I completely agree, it's a good academic study, that's what they do at Wharton, but no one in the market does that. Everyone looks at, "What's the market for a cap rate? And if you want to buy it, you buy it for that, or you don't buy it for that." And that's really what drives it. So, I would like to sort of see that analysis also in that, in that process of how we do The other thing I think that is important on this is, if we're going to have any issues with the parking, we should discuss it tonight as well. I don't want it to come back and then we say, "Well, we don't like the DEI exception of moving it off from the sidewalks." So, I'm going to address that first. I know Council, I know Mayor Holman and myself wrote a colleague's memo on moving things back from the sidewalks. I'm glad we're moving it back from the sidewalks. I think it looks a lot better. So, I absolutely would agree that that's a good exception. I also think that we should point out, on item number seven, we actually got a letter from Palantir, who took the traffic counts, and not traffic counts, the parking counts. It's very interesting. For Palantir, Survey Monkey, and was it Real IQ, I think, or something? Which was 270,000 square feet of office space. And what they showed was a 67% utilization of their parking. They also showed that, I think it was just like 228 square feet per person is what's used, but on the mode share, most people are not driving, in fact. So, I know we've had a lot of speakers that come up and say, you know, "Four per thousand is incorrect." So far, all the data I've seen since I've sat here on council is that that's simply not true. That for our three biggest employers, it's four per thousand. And I do think what we see is that on some of these small buildings where the startups go, yes, they do. But anytime you get a credit tenant, which this building clearly would have, you end up with something below four per thousand. That's what the data is showing. And we think of ourselves as a very data-driven council. And I think it's important for us to be honest about what the data is showing on that stuff. So, frankly, on this, there's two things going on. One, I agree with, with Planning Director Gittleman, that the mixed use works. I've seen it working. I know it works. The other thing is, is that I don't see how this building is underparked, given, given what this data shows us and given that. So, if the building's not underparked, we get the new traffic study, and we take a relook at the, we take a relook at how the concessions are calculated, I think that goes a long way to where we are in the next meeting. And I would, again, encourage anyone who disagrees and thinks that we should look at anything else, that they do it tonight.
Sorry, I was distracted there. Councilmember DeBois. And a question has been posed, like, "What does this mean? Does this mean we're continuing the project?" Well, consideration of the project, I would say, if this motion passes, I would say that that is indeed the case. So, Councilmember DeBois.
Yep. I'd like to offer another friendly amendment. So, I think you hit upon the revenue piece, and I'd like to bring in, I think, some additional thoughts on the cost part of the analysis. So, I actually have a three-part friendly amendment. So, after your first sentence up there, and I tried to send this to you. And in regards to cost, use a model that doesn't assign the proradic cost of the entire building to the BMR units, but looks at the incremental market rate and the BMR revenue and offsets that with a density bonus. And then, a second part would be a change to the traffic, instead of just saying the intersection of Page Mill.
Councilmember DeBois?
Yep.
Can you repeat that a little bit more slowly, so clerk can capture it, please? Your point, your First Amendment, please?
He's doing it. He's typing it in.
Okay, all right, continue then.
So, in the second part, ask staff to provide more detail on travel impact that takes into account actual traffic growth on nearby intersections, including the impacts of the recent Stanford project and the Park Boulevard impacts. And then, the third one, to Councilmember Scharf's point on parking, a conditional use permit put in place that requires occupants and users of the building to park in the garage. If not complied with, the city will initiate a residential permit parking program for
So, maker of the motion, do you accept those, any or all of those?
I want to ask a question about the first one. So, actually, I want to ask the attorneys about the question, about the first one. Is there any state mandate and requirement about how the costs of the project be allocated? If I understand what Councilmember DeBois is asking, he's making the entirely reasonable question of, you know, should we look at this as, you know, a big building that we put three more units on, and so the incremental cost of the three units, you know, is very small? Is that basically what you're asking?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Are you asking me to...
No, sorry.
Could you repeat that, sorry?
Yeah, are you basically asking, you know, should we be looking at the incremental cost of the three units as opposed, over an existing building as opposed to evenly allocating the cost of the whole thing?
Yeah, and I actually have some arguments. If you guys accept the amendment, I'll explain, but yes.
Okay. I just want to ask a question. Does the state law give any, require us to calculate it one way or the other?
There's very little guidance, as we said, on methodology. But I do think it would be helpful if Reed can confirm that he understands that request, and is it doable?
Okay.
And while he's thinking about that, I guess...
So, let me, let me first accept the amendment and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just to add, you know, what a court is going to look at is the reasonableness of whatever methodology is used. So, it is important that our consultants have an opportunity to explore and comment on that.
Okay. I guess I will accept the amendment, then.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Schmidt, do you accept?
Can I speak to it, then? First of all, I don't think anybody's done this. I actually want to thank the developer. In a lot of ways, I think you've done a lot of things right. I sincerely appreciate the quality of the design of the project. It's true mixed use, the outreach to the neighbors, listening to neighbors, I think all of that has been excellent. And this project's been under review for a long time. I spent quite a bit of time reading the reports, evaluating the economic model. And, you know, we're being asked to rule on several things, and unfortunately, this is really the first test case of going off-menu. And I think that's kind of what's happening here. But, you know, we're being asked to decide on the mitigated negative declaration, the site design review, two design exceptions, and the request to go off-menu all at once. And it's a complicated thing. And I actually agree with Councilmember Scharf that we should try to get everything in here at once. And so, for me, I found issues in multiple areas with the traffic, the parking, and the economic model itself. So, on the traffic, I did find the report online. It was three years old. It did not look at Park Boulevard, where we had multiple projects going on. And I think, you know, intensity of use is a big concern. And so, you know, I think that speaks to the amendment on the traffic analysis and considering a couple, a couple of the projects that are actually coming. I think Lydia's list of projects was pretty compelling. On the parking side, again, it all comes down to intensity of use. And, you know, there's a lot of data out there that says we're using very old numbers. Coronet, which is used by architects and planning professionals, says the global average right now is 150 square feet. There's a lot of indications it's lower than that in Palo Alto. Stanford uses numbers much less than that in its planning. And so, there potentially is a much larger number of people who will be using this building. And so, I like the idea of the conditional use permit for parking, if we can make that work. And then, the third one is the economic model, and that's my biggest concern. And, you know, frankly, it just doesn't pass the sniff test. So, we're asked to believe that to provide three market-rate apartments, you need to make these major concessions, and it still doesn't cover the cost of the BMR units. And again, this is setting a precedence for our city. It's the first time this ordinance has been used. If we accept the methodology used in this case, then none of our zoning will really mean anything. Project costs can be loaded up to justify nearly any amount of density. And so, we need to make sure we get this right. And unfortunately, the PTC didn't do us any favors in the minutes. Commissioner King, Commissioner Keller, they started to get to the heart of the issue, but they were voted down. And so, you know, I'd ask if any of our current planning commissioners are watching the meeting, please be diligent and make absolutely sure the proformers make sense before passing them to the council. So, you know, basically, I think Councilmember Phil Seth's point was that in today's market, we need to have a more rigorous and in-depth analysis. Several simplifying assumptions are made, and the model's highly sensitive to those assumptions on both the construction costs and the revenue side. So, the concessions asked were a 38% increase in lot coverage. I think the staff report said it was 19%, but it was going from 50% to 68%, which is a 38% increase. 100% increase in the commercial space, 33% increase in total square footage. And the analysis used a prorata approach for the building costs. And it basically allocated the entire cost of the underground garage on a prorated basis to the BMR units. And the problem with that approach is that another developer may decide they want to have a marble entranceway and gold-plated urinals on the first floor, whatever it is. But by doing a simple prorata, those expenses get passed on to the BMR units. And so, in this case, it's an underground garage. The resulting construction cost was 630 square foot, and that's what was used for the affordable housing. I spoke to one of the top commercial real estate advisory companies today, explaining that the property's on contaminated ground. And their comment was, "I can't speak to how the cost may be influenced by contamination, but $630 seems crazy expensive." I got a cost report for new development projects in downtown San Francisco, which should be more expensive than Palo Alto. And the total cost, both hard and soft coasts, but costs, but excluding land, was $338 per square foot. And that's a five-story, 128-unit development with one level of underground parking. So, to echo Eric, I think we need a more fine-grained approach. And on the cost side, I would like this to find a method that shields the city from individual construction costs and the potential of loading expensive things into a building and spreading that over the BMRs, because that point, you will be able to justify pretty much whatever density you want. I would suggest a couple of methods, but I would defer to our consultant. I think we could look at the cost of multi-unit housing. RS Means, which the consultant refers to, cites New York City as the highest cost for multi-unit housing. It's a couple of years old, but it was at $232 per square foot. And really, the incremental cost of three BMR units within a shell of a building is So, so, I know this means going on for quite a while, so I want to just skip to the end. So, personally, what I found is that the requested incentives, I believe, exceed what's required based on the written and financial evidence. I believe the analysis is insufficient, doesn't capture either the cost or the benefit correctly in this case. And we should commission a pro forma model that doesn't assign the proradic cost of the entire building to the BMR units. So, that's kind of the background for my friendly amendment.
So, as we blow past our self-imposed deadlines here, Councilmember Burt, to be followed by Councilmember Menace.
I'm sorry, Mayor Holman, I do have some clarifying questions about the amendment that was just added. First, I wanted to make sure on the traffic impact suggestion that Councilmember DeBois just made, are you requesting that we change our methodology to use a list-based approach rather than a growth rate approach, even if we find that the growth rates are in line with past history? Or are you just suggesting that we take another look to make sure that our methodology adequately accounts for the developments that you cite?
I think it's the latter.
Okay.
But, and I'm also specifically asking about Park Boulevard, where there's several developments.
And were you asking for an analysis of traffic conditions on Park Boulevard, or just simply to make sure that those projects you're speaking of have been adequately included in the analysis?
That they be adequately included. It is three years old, I think, you know, we should look at that.
Two more questions. One, really a comment more than a question, that the final sentence about initiating a residential permit parking program, we've, the council's adopted an ordinance that sets forth procedures for implementing residential permit parking. And so, I just question whether we could, we could really require that in a project condition of approval in the way you've indicated. And then, thirdly, I wanted to ask Reed if he understands what you're asking for in the modified approach to the economic analysis, and so that he can comply with this request.
I think I understand part of it. I'd have to think through a little bit more what I think I'm hearing you ask for, and perhaps some clarifying questions may be needed. I'm not prepared tonight to say I totally understand the new analysis that would be done. It's the best I can say right now.
Do you have a question, or just want to think about it?
It has some potential ramifications on some other aspects of the analysis, and I have to think through what those ramifications would be before I could clarify the question.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, let me follow on to...
You know, I apologize, I'm going to interrupt you here for a second. We are at 10:23. We are basically an hour and a half past our time to take up item number seven. We have the potential for a closed session after this. At least, we have the discussion about whether to have the closed session or not. I had told the public earlier that they would be allowed to speak between the 9:00 and 10:30 timeframe, because that's when we had noticed this item. So, given the hour being almost 10:30, we either need to interrupt where we are now, which would lead to a disjointed discussion, I think. But who has, who's here to speak? If you just show hands, who's here to speak to the seventh item?
It's too many.
So...
I'm sorry.
If we can conclude this item in the next 10 minutes, the first, and people think we can't. So, so, City Attorney, can we table this item and go to the public so they can speak to item number seven?
I don't want to do that.
I mean, it's not ideal, but...
There's nothing in the Brown Act that prevents you from holding this item and moving to item number seven, and then returning to this item after that. If you make that procedural ruling, it's subject to being overruled if your colleagues do not wish to handle it in that way.
So, I have three more lights from colleagues that want to speak, and I have a couple of comments to add. So, we're probably, I'm guessing, another 20 minutes or so, which will put us pretty close to 11 o'clock. I don't know if members of the public are willing to hang in there with us if we don't interrupt ourselves.
I think we can't.
I don't see anybody, I don't see anybody saying they're going to storm out of here, so, okay, we'll continue.
Don't you have another night scheduled for that number seven?
We had a continuation night for number seven.
Which was targeted...
But people have stayed tonight to speak to this. So, so, let's be efficient as we go forward and get through with this one as quickly as possible. Councilmember Burt.
Okay, well, I'll just say that it's not adding up, because we have a closed session potential at, after item seven. So, my recommendation would be, we bite the bullet and say that we're not going to be able to take up seven tonight. But, all right, I'll move that. No further discussion, I might...
So the other possibility is just take public comment tonight on item seven, since people have come.
I understand that.
Understanding. Okay. But of course, you can come back and speak into the time, but people have hung out all this time to speak. So if the motion is to continue item number seven, but allow the public to speak tonight if they so desire.
I don't see how we're going to have that time.
So the motion is just to continue item seven?
Yep.
To February 9?
We were targeting February 9.
February 9. Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those voted on the board? That passes with Councilmember Phil Seth and Wobak voting no, with apologies to the public. Okay, so coming back to item number six, Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, I have a question. Is it, I'm sorry, is it Reed?
Yes.
Yes. Given that you were struggling with whether you could really, you had a clear understanding of the intent of the motion, and we're not going to have another council meeting that would allow us to give any clarifying direction, I'm a little concerned how we go forward if we can't resolve the ability for staff to implement the motion before us, because our consultant isn't clear enough on the motion. I think we've got to have Reed identify what's not clear and resolve that tonight, because otherwise, we haven't really given direction, and we're back in this situation where we could come back and Reed comes back with a response, and we say, "That's not what we meant."
Well, one question that's occurred to me, I think the Councilmember DuBois' request to change the methodology of estimating the affordable housing cost to, from the assumption that we used, which was a prorata share of the total cost of the project, to what I think you're saying is to assess that cost on the basis of the difference between a market rate apartment rent versus the BMR rent, if that's what you were saying.
Yeah.
And then, but of course, that's an annual difference. So how would you recognize the fact that that is, would you capitalize that annualized difference in order to recognize what the total cost difference would be, or affordable housing cost would be?
Yeah. Yeah, so if you look at it, I think the difference was $10 per net square foot between, on, you know, and then you could apply the market rate for the office space, and that would give you, I guess, an additional, either additional amount of office space, I guess, that would cover that difference.
Let me frame this slightly differently, because I think before us tonight, we not only have to have our consultant understand our request, but our consultant has to concur that it's a reasonable approach. Is that correct? Is that...
I would urge that that may actually require some analysis and thought on the consultant's part.
Okay, so then, City Attorney, are you saying that as this, as the motion is proposed, that you believe that's a reasonable request by the council under the state bonus law requirements in our ordinance?
I'm not sure I understand your question. The point of my comment was urging you not to constrain the consultant's response and analysis. And it may be, as the experts look at what the council is interested in, they may see aspects to it that were not specifically articulated by the council member, but appear to answer the intent of the question that they may wish to bring forward, and we want to allow that to occur.
Do we need slightly more latitude in the motion, then, to reflect that? Or does the motion capture that well enough?
I would want to hear from the planning director and the consultant on that.
Well, my feeling is that whatever the motion requests in terms of additional analysis, we're going to, we're going to do what you're requesting of us to the best of our ability, and if the inquiry leads around a corner or in a slightly different direction, we'll pursue those additional questions as well.
So you feel you have that latitude under this motion, and you don't need any greater clarity?
I do. I should indicate that I think we will, in the course of our analysis, consider whether these additional methodologies are reasonable and defensible, and try and advise the council of that as well.
Okay, good. And then I had a small amendment on, and I'm trying to, this got a little long, but it's about the wanting to capture, under the parking analysis, to capture the impact of the loss of on-street parking on Page Mill. That's right. This is Mayor Holman's issue. So can I offer that as an amendment?
Councilmember Phil Seth?
I accept that amendment.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Can I make a comment on, Planning Commissioner Gilman made a comment before that I think is accurate. In the language of the amendment, before that says, "The city will initiate a residential parking permit program for the neighborhood," and I think...
No, I'm going to address that next. I'm...
Okay.
So I agree that that paragraph about the RPP has some problems to it. So first, I have a question. I'm not sure that there would be an enforceable way to require occupants to use the parking garage. And so if the language were changed to reflect a request that staff explore or return to us with evaluation of a conditional use permit that might obligate occupants to use the parking garage, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I knew there was an issue with the way I worded that.
And then, on the second part of it, our RPP programs are, for instance, initiated by neighborhoods, not by the city. So that second sentence, if not complied with, the city, should we say, may initiate a...
Wasn't there an addition that allowed the council to initiate the RPP?
Well, I don't want to lock us into saying that we'd have an RPP if the neighbors didn't want one, for instance.
Sure.
Yeah, if I could offer just a comment on that, you went through a very thoughtful process to set up a procedure that does allow for neighborhoods to come forward when there is a problem, and standards to measure that and assess. And that may, in fact, answer and speak to the interest that you have here, which is ensuring that there's a process, if there is neighborhood parking intrusion, that the city is readily able to address that in a kind of reasonably prompt way.
Okay. So the real intent I was trying to capture was to not have to delay for the year process if there's a way to accelerate it?
I think at this point in time, if we just have "may," it doesn't try to prescribe an exact sequence of events. And then I have two comments. First, when this does return to us, as I look at it, I, and I consider the various issues that may come forward, I'll say that I'm probably more open to being persuaded that the parking could be adequately addressed on-site if it weren't for such a huge, what I would call a huge, office bonus that's going on here. And we're going to have some discretionary judgment on what is permissible in the parking below our standard. There's a range, right? And that's discretionary ultimately. So I'll just offer that. And when I look at this, and I know that the applicant had said that, you know, they were looking for, if I captured it right, for the, as much residential as possible. And I understand, because there's a huge indifference between the permitted amount of residential, number of residential units and what's here. And these are larger units than might otherwise have been assumed. And I don't see this as anything approaching a net benefit. We had a number of, from our jobs housing issues, we had a number of members of the public speak who are concerned about affordable housing in the community and our jobs housing balance. And depending on how we calculate this, this project compared to what we would have under existing CS zoning, is a huge imbalance between the jobs created and the number of housing units that are created to offset those jobs. We have, maybe it's 86 jobs at four per thousand, and we have 10 residential units, and we're displacing four residential units in the process. So we have a net gain of six residential units for, for the, to offset the creation of 86 jobs, whereas under existing CS, depending on, you know, how large the units are, without calculating the loss of the existing six, it's closer to a wash between jobs created and residents who are occupying those units, not necessarily workers, but residents. So that's, those are just my comments. And out of courtesy for the applicant, I see he'd like to respond to what I raised as issues. Is that all right?
Yes, it is, and thank you for pointing that out.
Thanks. Yeah, I would like to respond what I meant by trying to maximize the housing. So the constraints were that this site, it's true that CS allows for more residential, and we didn't reach their maximum. The street being busy did not seem to lend itself to a high residential density. At the lower floors, I've spent time there overnight, listening to trucks in the morning. I think that housing on the first or second floor would be too close to the traffic, and therefore, it seemed to make more sense to use it for commercial than the lower levels. We went then to the third floor and maximized the use there, and this question came up during PTC. We could have made smaller apartments. It probably would have provided housing for some of the younger workers working in tech companies. We seem to think that the direction that was being asked by the housing element and the need was for housing for families. And here, we have a unit mix that provides for different-sized families to be there, as well as individuals, if that's what, you know, the...
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I just, a final comment is, I want to echo what Councilmember DuBois said about, aside from the issues of how much of a bonus we have, which is quite large and quite precedent-setting, the design elements of this project, I would say, are exceptional for the size of the project that it is. And that's not only the aesthetics of it, but the whole livability of the project and how those two things integrate. I think it's a good model in terms of having really strong design that does the best with whatever size project it is. Different debate about what size project it should be. Thanks.
Councilmember Menace?
Mine, again, is going to be a clarification. We are asking for a great deal of extra information here, appropriate, that is what we do as a council, even though it looks a bit sausagey at this point. But in addition, it says to me that we simply are putting the request of the applicant for approval of the mitigated NECD on hold until we come back with this. Is that correct? Looking down at that end? Yes? So a sent, well, it must be, it doesn't, it doesn't in any way address the actual recommendation. It addresses the additional information we want before we can address the recommendation. Am I correct? As long, yes, thank you. That's all. I'm willing to support it. We'll see what comes out of it.
Councilmember Berman?
Thank you very much, and I've enjoyed and appreciated the conversation and the comments made by colleagues. I think, you know, the biggest concern here is that we're setting a precedent, and that we've got a state law that's really terribly drafted, that has unintended consequences, that we should probably also look for ways to improve and have conversations with our legislators about, because I'm sure they weren't realizing, you know, the possible implications of the, you know, the state density bonus law. And I think we all agree that additional affordable housing is a very good thing and desperately needed thing in Palo Alto. But, you know, when setting a precedent, we need to be really diligent about making sure that we're doing the appropriate analysis for our community. And so I think we're moving further down that path. A couple of questions I have. First, a comment. You know, when talking about parking, I think we really need to be cognizant of the fact that we're confusing employees per square footage with parking spaces per square footage. And the rule in Palo Alto, the code says 250 square feet of office space per parking space, not per employee. And, you know, we've seen data that shows that 100% of employees do not drive single occupancy vehicles, and efforts that we're taking and have taken are trying to drive that down. So let's, you know, make sure that we understand what we're talking about when discussing the ratio of employees per, per square footage, and what that means to the number of parking The terms reasonable and defensible have come up a couple of times, and clearly, there's a lack of clarity as to whether or not the analysis proposed in the motion would be reasonable and defensible. So I guess I want to make sure that staff and the consultant understand, if they're going down this analysis and are starting to get concerned that it's not reasonable and defensible, that they'll still bring back that analysis, because that's what we've asked for, but that they'll also conduct an analysis that they believe is reasonable and defensible, so that we have different options to analyze when this comes back to us, so that hopefully, we can make a judgment one way or the other on this project when it comes back to us. Along those lines, I'm still kind of queasy about this idea that we have no, and, you know, like others have said, this has nothing to do with the quality of the project. I think it's a very good project based on the size. I wish it wasn't so big. But I want to make sure that, but what I'm really most uncomfortable with is the fact that we've kind of lost all local control, you know, based on the state density bonus law. And there's a lot of, there's no clarity as to what we have control over. And one of the questions that I kind of brought up inarticulately, and I think Councilmember Burt got to more concisely, was, you know, what ability, if any, do we have to question the amount of the benefit that the developer would get from the concessions? And whether or not the proposed project might yield too great of a benefit, you know, in addition to the, not only would it mitigate the cost of the affordable housing, but then create this 1.2 million, or 11 million, or whatever the final number ends up being, benefit to the developer? And do we just have to accept that? Or do we have the ability to question that and say, "Well, you know, what if it were a quarter of that, or what if it were 50% of that?" And I know that's a complicated analysis, but if we can't, as Assistant City Attorney Silver said, if we can't make that judgment from the dais unless we have the appropriate information, then I guess I kind of want that information. And we're not going to get that with the current motion. And so, you know, I guess the amendment that I would offer is that, you know, staff come back with additional analysis and information. Let me think about the best way to say this. And Councilmember Menace, we're definitely making sausage tonight. Let me just say what I'm trying to get at, and then figure out if there's a clear way to offer up an amendment. But what I'd like to see is, if staff comes back and they say, "Well, under this revised analysis, the proposed project would be $5 million, you know, would net a benefit to the developer of $5 million," we say, "Wow, that's way more money than we're comfortable, you know, essentially trading for three BMR units." So what would the project be if it were, you know, 25% of that additional benefit, or 50% of that additional benefit? So a benefit of 1 and 1/4 million, or 2 and 1/2 million. I'm using numbers, even though I'm really trying to use percentages. It might, is what I'm saying. It might, is what I'm saying absolutely crazy or does it make sense to, to staff and the consultant?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Berman. I think what you're asking for is a, is a legal analysis as to whether the city can limit the value of the concessions so they're more comparable.
Well, so that's, I mean, that's one element of it. And then the second element is, you know, if, if the analysis staff does, comes back and says it's a $10 million benefit, we're going to want to see numbers of, well, what would it be if it were a $2.5 million benefit? And a $5 million benefit, what would the project look like in terms of the additional office space? And I'll just say that my big concern is the additional office space, not the housing. Um, and so what would, um, you know, making the project smaller, um, what would a project that yielded a $5 million benefit look like in terms of the number of square footage? That's kind of what I'm trying, because Carr mentioned, you know, we have to have some defensible numbers if we're going to make the decision to shrink the size of the project. So I guess I'm saying, you know, would staff be able to provide us numbers when they come back to us so that if we did want to shrink it, we'd have the data to be able to do that?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Berman. I think I understand what you're asking and I'm not sure that we can analyze an unlimited number of scenarios.
Absolutely.
Or a sliding scale. But if you had one hypothetical suggestion that you'd like us to hypothetically analyze?
I mean, so, I mean, you know, I, I guess I'll ask for two, which is whatever the benefit is, give us an analysis of 25% of that benefit and 50% of that benefit. How about that? And maybe I should ask my colleagues if they're even remotely interested in this.
Hey, Mark? You're offering a, he may have language for your amendment.
Oh, really?
I don't know if it's language, but the idea is if we had a model, what chance of the question, how much of a concession is necessary instead of, is it sufficient?
What would that look like? I, I think that's right.
It would be an equation that says this much, a concession provides this much benefit.
It's basically inversion of the current formula.
So if that's doable.
Can I ask Reed to comment or question?
Uh, yes. I think, um, to separate the, the analysis into two different parts, because I think that's what I'm hearing. The, the first question is merely an, an economic exercise, right? It's, it's the, it's the financial analysis as modified that we've been talking about. I think the second part of that request is much more complicated because it, it then asks to, i- if the answer is that the, the concessions are more than what is needed, then I think the question is, well, how, how much can we cut the project back and what would that project look like? I think that's what I'm hearing.
Correct. That's exactly right.
And I think it's, for us, we're the economists here. We can't answer that question because we're, you would need an architect to design the building essentially. And so, um, that, that becomes a much more complicated, complicated question to answer, unfortunately. I mean, I can appreciate the reason for the question, but it's, it's, it's a much more complicated.
And I can appreciate the complexities.
Yeah.
Just make a quick.
Well, I.
Did the applicant want to speak?
Please.
Yes, please, just a moment. So.
Oh, that's all right.
We're obviously looking at this from different directions. And, uh, looking at the state density bonus, I mean, if you're looking at a way to make it kind of be equal, my understanding is that the state wants to incentivize.
Sure, sure. And I'm, I'm not necessarily saying it be equal. I'd just love to see an analysis of different, of varying degrees of benefit.
And then there is, so we looked at the envelope of the building, saying, what can you do on this property? How can you efficiently use it both for commercial and residential use? And, um, you know, if you're saying, okay, well, maybe there could be less office, you're talking about this hollow space on the second floor, the, the residential sits on the office. So then you're going to have to back out, okay, how much more residential are we going to take off of this?
So I think, I mean, I think all of these are very valid points that would probably be better made.
And, and then finally, the, the, the BMR units and the residential, these things reduce the value of an office building when it stands alone. And, uh, coming to break even, I mean, I would not choose to put BMR in there if I had the choice because the tenant is going to look at that and it affects market rates, it affects rental rates. And this was meant to be an incentive. And this is how I understood the state density bonus law, saying if you give BMRs, you can go over. And the limit, if it's all residential is a 35%. We respected that. I mean, so in the spirit of that, we actually went to .35 or 3.3. And the attempt was to use the space in a way that wouldn't negatively affect anybody. I mean, if you take away office here, we're parked, we have the space for it. The city, although everyone thinks office is a horrible word, the city actually does need more office space. You can tell by the rates they're growing. And, uh, you know, to my, to my understanding, the cap rate calculates the increases for future years. And if the increases are expected to be higher, the cap rate's going to be lower, which it is. So I have tried to approach this in a way that I thought the state wanted us to in order to provide these units and.
And the danger, understood. The danger from our side is, you know, what, what the project does is it provides three BMR units in exchange for doubling the office space. And that's, that's a precedent for the rest of town. That's a very dangerous precedent, uh, that we have to analyze very carefully before we, before we vote on that project.
Can I make a comment on that one? Which is, I think you guys are pulling on a very important thread, okay? I don't know that it needs to be part of this motion. It seems separate to me, which is how do we operate in the context of these state density bonuses? Because this is the first time we've seen this, right? And I, I, I think you're asking all the right questions. I just, I don't know if it applies to the disposition.
It sounds like it complicates this. My concern is.
We need to talk about it.
Yeah.
So can I interject here? So, uh, you offered an amendment here, the staff to come back with initial analysis and information, that amendment, and it sounds like the maker of the motion is not going to accept it.
One, it sounds like staff has indicated it's too complex of an analysis to be able to provide right now. I mean.
There's a lot of stuff in here already.
Yeah. I mean, my concern is that when it comes back, we're going to want to then have that discussion and, and, you know, then we're, I guess the Councilmember Sharpe's question of, are we being fair to the applicant and, and being able to provide a, a resolu, or, you know, resolution to his issue? But, but I understand that, that.
There's, there's some risk. There's some risk here that we go too far in the wrong direction and try to tell the applicant what to do, right?
Sure.
They're the experts, not us.
I think we've questioned that tonight to a certain extent.
So, so bringing, bringing this back here.
We're just guys with HP12Cs.
Councilmembers, so.
So I think that's, I think those are all the questions I had. Let me take a quick look before I give up the mic.
So the final amendment here is not, is not accepted and you don't want to.
Or not even made.
And, okay. Okay.
Might the architect answer the question?
Always.
I, I don't, John, I, John, I appreciate your ability or willingness, but I'm not sure we need to go there since it's been withdrawn, so.
Oh, I'm not even sure where we're going.
So, in which case, why do you need to speak?
Well, I, I know where, I know the question I have. It would be very helpful for us if you could put a date certain because we've been in this process for 18 months and it'd be nice to get back here before we celebrate our, our two-year anniversary. That would be, that would be a request that we make. And, uh, on a lighter note about making sausage, we also designed the restaurant Chez Frank and I urge you to come by and try the gourmet hot meals.
Thank you for the invitation.
So, Councilmember Berman, are you complete?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Wobak?
Okay, uh, a couple of things. First, for staff, since we're offering to foot the bill for this, uh, for this further analysis, uh, can we ballpark how much that's going to cost the city?
Uh, I think we're going to need some time to consult with our, um, partners in this and, uh, I can't give you a number off the fly.
Can you give me a, a floor and a ceiling?
I'm, I'm afraid not. I don't think this is going to break the bank, but it's, it's not negligible either. It's not going to cost, uh, a hundred dollars. I think we're talking several thousands of dollars at least. I think, I think Reed said his current scope of work is about $12,000, so we're probably in that neighborhood.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, we're thinking about that. Um, I'm not saying I'm opposed, so I just want to make sure we're considering what the costs are of sending this back for further analysis. Um, also, the city may institute a residential permit parking program in any neighborhood. We have a process for that now. I think that, uh, paragraph five, sentence two is completely unnecessary. Let's try to trim some of this sausage. I would, I would offer a friendly amendment to eliminate paragraph five, sentence two, which reads, "If not complied with, the city..." dot, 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 "for the neighborhood." I think we just don't need that sentence. How would you guys feel about eliminating that sentence?
Maker.
So how, how would we enforce it with nothing there?
Well, we have a, so we have, we have a process already. I, Tom, are you okay with that? It seems to me we got a process.
Well, it's, it's Vice Mayor Schmitz, um, to accept or not. Do you accept it as the maker of the motion?
It was my amendment, I think.
So, uh, yes, I could.
Okay. Councilmember Schmidt, Vice Mayor Schmidt? Okay. So that is deleted. I understand, Councilmember DeBois, that that was your amendment, but.
And, and Mayor Holman, I, the remaining sentence in that paragraph, I'm afraid I, I need a little more clarification on it. It doesn't seem to reflect Councilmember Burt's request that it be about staff, um, considering whether there's a way, a condition of approval could be attached requiring occupants and users of the building to park in the garage.
It was supposed to say explore.
Explore or.
Yeah. Could we change propose to explore?
And explain conditional, and change conditional use permit to condition of approval.
Councilmember Burt, that was what you were intending? So that was your amendment?
Um, that would be acceptable to me.
Um, Councilmember Philsith and Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Council, back to you, Councilmember Wobak.
Um, and, you know, it's been said a lot, but I'll also reiterate that one of the major concerns here, uh, and I, I was worried it was going to get completely overlooked tonight, uh, but I'm, I'm pleased by how many people have pointed out the issue of, uh, how this project, as much as, you know, to be honest, the developer's done a lot of great work by using the zoning that's there, uh, but unfortunately, significantly because of the zoning and combined with that, the state, you know, density bonus law, um, this is, you know, a crazy negative impact on our jobs housing balance, which is already insane. Um, so this is just something for us to all keep in mind as we go forward and work on other issues. This is one of the reasons why I didn't want to, uh, push off, uh, topic number seven because I felt it was extremely relevant to this, but we'll get into that in due time. So that's, that's my commentary. I'm done with my amendments. Thanks.
So I'm going to throw a wrench in this, I'm afraid, and I didn't realize it until sitting here tonight. Um, CS zoning, which is what this property is zoned, uh, has a one-to-one FAR. So the staff report on page, packet page 96 says that the commercial FAR, in other words, the non-residential is 10,770 feet. The total FAR is 26,926. What's required in CS zoning is that the housing component of this project be 16,156 square feet, but actually what's being provided is 13,979. So it's short about, what is that, about 20, 200 square feet of housing component? So it isn't, it isn't providing them the, uh, square footage of housing that's required by our code. And why that's important is, well, it's important because it's important. But the other thing is, what it, what it makes me realize is that the performa may be based on something that's not the base because they're actually not building three additional BMR units. They're converting existing residential units to affordable units. So is the performa really based on the right, right, um, basis? You see what I'm saying? So the require, the requirement for square footage for housing is greater than actually what's being provided.
Uh, well, Mayor Holman, if I can interject, I, I believe, and I, and of course, we can go back and check this, I think that the, uh, CS zoning allows a certain FAR of residential, but it doesn't require that. So what's being proposed is something less than the allowable residential FAR. We'll, we'll of course confirm that. Uh, and I think to answer your second question about whether the performa takes into account the loss of the four dwelling units on site, uh, and then the addition of 10, uh, including three BMR, uh, I, I think that is, uh, the, the total cost of site development is, are built into the analysis, as I understand it.
So what you're saying is that the base project is not a one-to-one FAR? That it is a, um, it seems like an odd way to do this to me. It seems like at a minimum, we should be requiring the amount of housing, the square footage of housing that is allowable under CS zoning before we allow concessions for additional BMR units that actually converting what's allowed under code to be just converted to BMR units. Is this making sense?
Uh, let me take a stab at, um, explaining some, maybe it'll, it'll help. Uh, so what we did, again, just to replay earlier discussion, in, in the base case, CS zoning, straight CS zoning alternative, we determined that the project that would yield the highest return for the developer, i.e. the project that they would most likely build without the concessions, would be something less than the maximum permitted under CS zoning, the one-to-one FAR. So our own analysis, we had drawn the conclusion that they would build the most amount of office that would be permitted. That would be the .4 FAR. And then they would reduce down the amount of residential FAR to a point that the, the underground parking would not be triggered, essentially. So it was, it was our analysis that had come to the conclusion that that is, that the base case project is the one that they would most likely build. I don't know if that helped, but.
It does. It makes me even more disappointed in what, in what we can, what we can do. And that's not on the applicant. It's just like, gee, um, I could sit here and rail about the, uh, density bonus law and how we're creating the demand for, you know, 40 or maybe more housing units, um, and we're getting three in exchange for that 10,000 square feet. So that's not on the applicant, of course. That's on the state density bonus law. Um, a couple of other things which are, um, the TDM, since we're putting everything on the table that we want to have come back, the TDM program that's in the, um, in the, uh, conditions of approval, um, I'd like something that more concretely defines, um, that it is an enforceable TDM program. It looks to be like a, a report and monitor TDM program. I'd like for something that, I think, Councilmember, excuse me, um, Director Gittleman said there could be an agreement that, there could be a discussion with the applicant with potential for an agreement that would clarify that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Holman. Uh, you're right that at present that the TDM is included as a condition of approval, so it would be enforced through our regular code enforcement procedures. If we found it wasn't being implemented, we would u- use our code enforcement staff to encourage voluntary compliance and only, uh, take steps if that wasn't successful. If the council wanted to ask that that condition of approval be recast as some kind of agreement between the parties, uh, we could investigate that with the applicant.
Excuse me. Um, actually, what's written here is already what's in the TDM, uh, component. What I would like to have is something that indicated what the, um, what the enforcement mechanism would be, uh, should it not be agreed with. And I guess what I'm really getting at here, um, is we have several projects in town that have TDM agreements as a part of the, uh, regular land use action, and they're not enforceable. So I just, I'm not comfortable that this one isn't the same thing. So if staff can assure me that they will come back with something that is enforceable, then I won't need.
Well, I, I guess all of these programs are enforceable through our code enforcement mechanism, which includes the potential to levy fines if conditions of approval aren't complied with. Uh, if you're looking for something beyond that, uh, I guess I'll need a suggestion about what, what you had in mind.
Um, let me hold, hold that one for just a moment. Um, the other thing that I wanted, uh, addressed, please, is that, um, if there's something that, maybe this is a question for Mr. Northway, I am concerned about the trees being inboard of the sidewalk. Um, there's retail there. I think the amount of retail there is minuscule and that's disappointing to me. There are a lot of things about the project that I think are, are, are good and admirable, but the amount of retail is really disappointing. So is there some, uh, design component that you can think of that could create kind of a canopy or at least some barrier between this, between the street? It's a busy street. And, um, the sidewalk that would make pedestrians feel safer there?
Uh, I would.
Not, not on the fly, but can you, can you imagine that there might be something?
I'm sure there is something. Um, in all honesty, at this hour after sitting here, it's not floating around my brain right at this moment, but with a little rest, I'll bet you we could come up with something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not asking to design anything now by any means, just, um, but I would like that to be a consideration when this comes back.
On the, in the landscaping plan, you'll see there is a planting strip that runs right along the curb to, as a, something that tells you.
But there's no barrier.
It's not a barrier. But again, I don't know how the county, you know, we're in this juggling act with lots of government agencies that want to dominate. I, I don't know how the county would. I don't know how the county would feel about having a barrier in there right away. We would have to check it out.
Okay, so I guess a friendly amendment, or an amendment would be to ask the applicant to explore a barrier between the, between the street and the sidewalk that would afford some protection for pedestrians.
Mayor Holman, I'm, I'm not aware of any area in Palo Alto where we have something like that. Can you think of an example that, something you might have in mind that we could look at as a model?
I'm not thinking of an example either, but I'm also not being, not able to think of an example where we don't have trees on the outboard side of the sidewalk that separates pedestrians from the street.
I'm just thinking from an urban design perspective, we're trying to take what is a really busy intersection and make it a little more hospitable rather than less hospitable. I'd just be concerned that putting barriers between the pedestrian zone and the traffic zone might...
I'm, I'm not conveying what a barrier would look like. I would leave that to the designers. I would see something that was transparent, not opaque.
Okay.
So not barrier like a wall or anything like that. So some of it was designerly and transparent, and I don't mean a glass wall either. So maker and second or, accept that?
So are you asking for two amendments, one on the enforcement mechanism for TDM?
Well, let's just, let's just do the second one here first, the barriers.
Okay, I accept the, I accept the second one.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
I guess the question is, would that involve county and dealing with the county and working through barriers of some kind?
They would, I'm sure they would ask that question and see if that would.
Are we imposing substantial cost?
I have no idea. I, I'm asking them to explore it, that's all I'm asking for.
To explore, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the TDM program, I guess I won't make it, I won't add that as an amendment, but I just ask staff to come back with clarity on what the enforcement mechanism is, what penalties might be, and to clarify how this TDM condition of approval is different from any of the other TDM programs that I've been told over time that aren't enforceable. Hold on just a second here. That's, that's all I have. I have two more lights. It is 11:08. Are they critical? Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. All right, so the first thing, we've, we've talked a little bit, I mean, Councilmember Burt raised it, and Councilmember Berman raised it, the issue of methodology versus analysis. It's completely inappropriate, I think, as we all agree, to tell our consultant what methodology to use if that methodology is not reasonable and defensible. And I think we've all agreed on that. So I think we should put that in the motion, Frank, because we are creating a record, and, you know, we want to make sure that we don't, if this ever went to court or something, that it's clear that we are telling our consultant that he has to use an appropriate methodology. But when this came up, if the consultant feels that, for instance, one of the methodologies that we suggest in here is not defensible and not reasonable, we're paying for it. Do we want him to do the work, or do we want him to come back and tell us why it's not reasonable and defensible? Are we going to do anything worthwhile with, with an analysis that our consultant is telling us is not reasonable and defensible to start with, and are we willing to pay for that? I don't think we should be. So I think we should have an amendment, and I'll suggest it, that if the methodology suggested in the motion is determined to be not reasonable and defensible, the consultant will not do the work, but will provide an explanation of why.
Councilmember Philsith?
Is the...
Maker of the motion?
I've got a, I've got a, I've got a question for council, I think, and I'm trying to figure out how to, how to frame it, right? The state mandate says that in order to contest the requirement that we implement the off-menu concessions, that we have to provide a written and justifiable argument why the extra value of the concessions exceeds the cost of the BMR units. Is that correct?
So in order to deny the concessions, you need to, yes, provide a, a written document, which would be the record of land use, supported by substantial evidence, which would essentially be the consultant's report.
Right.
And the finding that you need to make is that the incentive is not required to provide for affordable rents or affordable sales price.
Okay. So I, I think Councilmember Scharf's request is entirely reasonable, but I would not want to put the city in a position where if there is a disagreement between the city and the consultant, in good faith, okay, and with good reasons on both sides, I would not want to put the city in a position where that would prevent us from pursuing a justification, right?
So then I'll just offer that we say that if the methodology suggested in the motion is determined to not be reasonable and defensible, and the planning director concurs, because that would be the city.
Right.
Then the consultant will not perform the analysis.
I think that's acceptable. Okay.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
What, 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 what do you think, Director Gittelman?
It's a legal question, not a planning question, but I'd be happy to consult with my colleagues at the other end of the table.
And if it helps the, the council's decision at all, we have run through various scenarios with KMA, because as you mentioned, this is such a new methodology for, for the city, and, and we've tested many things. I don't think that the expense is going to be, you know, considerable, or we wouldn't have made the offer to pay for it ourselves.
Right.
And typically, what we would do is if, if, if we didn't think that the methodology was defensible, then we would give you a, you know, a confidential memo on that.
Okay. Okay. Again, I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position that a good-faith disagreement stops us.
And if I could just offer this, I, I think we understand the spirit of the intent here is, is to be fiscally responsible, and we can do that. To the extent that these issues are sometimes matters of judgment.
Yep.
And relative risk, we just want to make sure that we as staff will not run afoul of council members' expectations if we go ahead and do the work at reasonable cost and then provide you that advice confidentially for your judgment.
Okay. I'm less concerned about the cost than, than the output.
So, so the maker of the motion, Councilmember Philsith, accepts that amendment and does the vice mayor?
A question to the consultant, I guess, are, are you confident? Are you at ease with the motion? That if you see that, I know you mentioned earlier, you have to think this through. If you come back to staff and said, "I don't get it, I don't want to do it," staff has permission then to say, "Okay, we'll go do it ourselves or find someone else," so that you don't have to have agreement from both the planning director and the consultant not to go ahead. But there's a two-step process here, where the consultant might come back and say, "It doesn't make sense to me," but it may make sense for the planning director.
Go ahead.
I, I think we understand that this is going to be a little bit of a dialogue. I, I would be more likely to me that, that Reed would come to me and say, "Hey, this doesn't seem reasonable exactly the way that council member suggested it, but I could do it this other way, and it might be reasonable," and we would pursue that.
Yeah, so it's a dialogue, and the consultant is comfortable.
Well, let me, let me just say this. I, I, I think I had made the comment earlier on that we've been involved with quite a few of these density bonus applications, and we've seen actually quite a few other consultants that have done similar reviews. And the methodology, the various methodologies that we've used in this case are consistent with all the other ones that we've seen. So I think what we're talking about doing tonight is, it veers off the courses of what is, of what is typical, let's just say that. So when we talk about what, in our judgment, is reasonable, given the circumstances, I think it's important to say that it is going beyond what you would, what everyone else does, in other words. So there is a little bit of discomfort that comes with that. I think that's important to say.
Yeah.
That being said, that's not unusual for us at all, so I think...
I, I think you may want to hear from the applicant's lawyer.
Yes.
So, I mean, I would ask that the applicant have the benefit of Reed's analysis. If this scenario plays out such that Reed determines that what you're asking for isn't reasonable and defensible, and therefore you choose to go with another consultant, I think it would be patently unfair if the applicant didn't have the benefit of that information and why that happened and how it happened.
Councilmember Scharf, are you complete?
No, no, I'm not complete, but I won't go on for much longer either. So a couple of other things. I don't understand what this means when we say the parking analysis to capture the effect of the loss of parking on Page Mill Road. And what I mean by that is that Caltrain requires that they get rid of the parking. It's my understanding of what I heard, which means that for every project that comes through, Caltrain will require that to occur. So, so the Caltrans, yeah. So the point I have is, we have a, we have a municipal code which says how much parking is required. And if you lose street parking because Caltrans doesn't want it, what do we, what are we really asking staff to do? Are we asking staff to say, I mean, I don't understand what we're asking staff to do here. Yes, as the maker.
It is that when we look at how much of a waiver we have to our grant, to our parking rules, based on it being a mixed-use project, that it should include the impacts of this project on parking demand. And part of that consideration should be a loss in on-street parking, not just solely in isolation, the on-site parking. So it's the impact of the project would go into our evaluation of how much parking they need to provide. That's the answer.
So is staff comfortable with that? Does that, I mean, is this an, Hillary, is this, is this something staff feels comfortable doing? I mean, I, I mean, you're going to have to check and see who actually parks there, or, or what, how do you take this? What are you, what are you, what are you going to do with it?
Well, I, I think what we would do is just disclose the, the loss of parking, and then we can come back and tell you exactly how many spaces would be lost on-street and compare that to the parking demand that we've calculated, and let you know if we think there's going to be a spillover impact.
Okay.
Can I just get one quick clarification on that? Is the county requiring that those places, parking places, parking spaces be removed, or is it, I thought I'd read that it was just to create a better viewscape?
It, it isn't the project that is resulting in the loss of the parking spaces, it is the county that is intending to eliminate those parking spaces in order to extend the left-hand turn lane westbound from Page Mill to Al Camino Real southbound. So it, it's not a result of the project, it's a result of future plans of the county.
Thank you for clarifying. Councilmember Scharf?
And so then, the whole barrier thing confuses me. We basically, in our comp plan, have this notion of pedestrian-friendly, walkable neighborhoods. A barrier is not friendly, walkable, and maybe the term barrier is not what you meant, Mayor Holman, maybe you mean something else. I, I don't know.
It could be safety measure, it could be, I mean, this is kind of a silly analogy, but, you know, I think of the owl bollards, maybe it's some kind of, you know, attractive bollards, something that provides some kind of safety.
So can we put safety measure instead of barrier? The word barrier grates on me.
Of course.
All right, that'd be great.
This hour, you can be ready for a break.
I don't think so. All right, with that, I, I'm finished.
Okay, Councilmember Berman?
So I hate to bring, come back to this, but I'm, I'm not really sure that I'm happy whether or not it's barrier or safety measure, I mean, and, and why we're doing this. If it's because there aren't trees in the planting strip, there are, I mean, I'm looking at the picture, there are 40 feet in between the trees, right? So if I'm in between two trees and I fall into the street, it's no different whether or not the trees are in the planting strip or not in the planting strip. I mean, I just feel like this is setting...
Do we really want to, at this hour, argue about this thing?
Yes, yes.
Only explore for the applicant?
I do, because I think it's totally unreasonable of us to be asking the applicant to do this. So I'll just, rather than argue about it, I'll just say, "I'm going to move an unfriendly amendment, I'm assuming that we remove the request that the applicant explore a safety measure between Page Mill Road and the sidewalk." And if I don't have a second, then I won't worry about it.
I'll second it.
So I've got two. So the reason for this is, I just don't understand why we're doing this, and I worry that we're going to start doing this for other projects around town, and I don't think that sets the appropriate aesthetic value that we're trying to achieve in Palo Alto. I, I think that there's little or no reason to do it, and I think it's wasting the applicant's time to request that they look into it, and frankly, asking the applicant to explore it, you know, that doesn't give them a lot of guidances to how much time they're supposed to spend doing this, and, and, you know, when we'd be satisfied if, if they decided it wasn't necessary. So I just don't, the reason I'm opposing it is I don't think it would look, I don't think it's necessary, I don't think it's, it's warranted, and I don't think it would look good if we had something there.
Councilmember Scharf, you want to speak to your second?
I'll just briefly say, I agree with Councilmember Berman. I, I don't think it's necessary, I don't think explore, I don't think we're going to get much with explore. I probably don't feel as strongly, but I think that the applicant will say, "Okay, I explored it, it doesn't seem to work, and we'll be done with it," but...
So I see no other lights, so we will vote to, on whether to delete, a vote yes would be to delete the safety measures. And that motion, that amendment fails on a six-three vote with Councilmembers Berman, Scharf, and Wolbach voting yes. So is that all you have, Councilmember Berman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolbach?
I was also going to propose that. I also, so after our discussion about the, the loss of parking on Page Mill Road, my understanding, I was supportive of that, so where it says parking analysis to capture the effect of the loss of parking on Page Mill Road, I was supportive of that under the impression that that was part of the project. If that's not part of the project, if that's going to happen anyway, and they were just designing around what they knew the future was going to be, then that's not part of the project, that's not an impact of the project, I don't think it's fair or reasonable, it's just going to get us in trouble and waste time to include that. I would propose eliminating the sentence, parking analysis to capture, yada, yada.
Do you want to speak to your motion, any, or your amendment, any further, Councilmember Wolbach?
Well, I was offering it as a friendly amendment before we get it, it being competitive.
No, I'll pass it.
Okay.
I do want to speak to it.
Okay. So, yeah, do I want to speak to it? I, I just did. I, I think it's unnecessary, unfair, and...
Who's, who's amendment was this originally?
That's, that's because Councilmember Scharf jumped in with a second.
Well, that's probably true, we should probably follow.
Councilmember Philsith, did you want to accept it as a amendment or not?
Can I ask you a question? Who's, who originally proposed that one?
Councilmember Burt, following up on my comments.
I'd love to hear Councilmember Burt's opinion. Can I ask for that?
No, really, either needs to have, be seconded or not. So Councilmember Scharf seconded it, you, you are declining to, because you're not saying yes, you're saying no.
I will accept it.
Okay, so you're accepting it? Vice Mayor Schmidt?
No.
So that still needs the second, so Vice Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Scharf, you need to speak to your second?
Yeah. You know, I think it's a bad, a bad approach when it's not part of the project, it's not part of the, not part of the process, we've never, we haven't done that before, and I don't think we should do it now.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes, so here's the rationale. When we look at how much reduction in our parking requirement is needed, we look at a variety of factors on the site and the surroundings, and staff will be looking at their best professional judgment of how much parking will be needed for a mixed-use project. If there is a bunch of parking... will be needed for a mixed-use project. If there is a bunch of parking on the street, staff will probably require less on-site parking than if there is no parking on the street. So it's a valid consideration for staff, staff to include in their appraisal of how much parking needs to be there on a mixed-use project. That's the reason. It's not their fault, it's just the reality of a subjective calculus. Staff is allowed to give up to a 20% waiver, and it's based on a variety of factors, and I would assume this would be one of them.
So seeing no other lights, the amendment we're voting on right now is to remove the statement, "The parking analysis to capture the effect of the loss of parking on Page Mill Road." So a, 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 no vote will retain that language. And that passes on a, excuse me, that fails on a five-four. So councilmembers Berman, Scharf, Welbach, and Niss, vote in favor. So, anything else? I see no other lights.
Mayor Holman, could we at least though give a fairly date certain to the applicant? It's now 11:30, and we just, he probably wants to know, "When will the sausage be cooked?" Fair enough. Staff?
Are you guys really comfortable just pulling a number out of the air? I mean, why can't we just huddle and let the council know and the applicant ASAP? I think we'd feel a little bit better just being able to have some after 11:30 at night conversations tomorrow and this week. You will still have the same effect of us giving the accurate estimate as the date certain.
And I see no one-
And we would share that with the applicant.
I see no one from the applicant team jumping up, so I'm presuming that is okay.
Or are they too tired to jump up?
So, so the-
The way it was presented, it didn't sound like we had a whole lot of options. We, we just need to know a date certain. And I, I, I think what the city manager is suggesting that most decisions made at this time of night are a little shaky, and certainly cost, time estimates would fall into that category. So if you can just let us know within the next few days, that would be fine.
Okay. And then bear with me for a minute, because I do need to read the motion into the record. Councilmember Phil Siff moved, seconded by Vice Mayor Schmidt, to request additional pro forma off-menu concessions analysis and use a discounted cash flow approach applying local rental rate growth and reasonable risk-adjusted cost of capital figures. In regards to costs, use a model that does not assign the prorated cost of the entire building to the BMR units, but looks at the incremental market rate and BMR revenue and offsets that with a density bonus. Staff is to review the, the rate of traffic growth assumed at the intersection of Page Mill and Al Camino Real to the historic growth rate. As staff, staff is to provide more detail on travel impact that takes into account actual traffic growth on nearby intersections, including the impacts of recent Stanford projects and the Park Boulevard impacts. Staff will explore a condition of approval that requires the occupants and users of the building to park in the garage. Parking analysis to capture the effect of the loss of parking on Page Mill Road, and the applicant is to explore safety measures between Page Mill Road and the sidewalk. And lastly, that if the methodology suggested in the motion is determined not to be reasonable and defensible, and the director of planning and community environment concurs, the consultant will not perform the analysis but will report back to council on why the methodology is not reasonable and defensible. With that, vote on the board. And that motion passes unanimously. So... We continued item number seven to February 9th, and we are moving councilmember questions, comments, and announcements to this point in the agenda. Do councilmembers have any comments or announcements? Seeing no lights, and if, if the applicant and everyone from the public could go out into the lobby, it would be appreciated.
Councilmembers return to their dais.
So maybe staff can help escort some people out to the lobby.
Escort councilmember Berman out?
Escort. So on a, on a more serious note, there is, there is one thing to address under comments, and that is the events of this last weekend. And there was a communication sent out today that expresses our, that we are all deeply saddened to learn over the weekend of the death of a Gunn High School student who lost his life to suicide, and that we share in the grief and loss with all students, parents, and families. We know the community remains resolute in its efforts to support building a healthy and safe environment. We stand ready to support the Unified School District, parents and students as we work through this together and support those in distress. We also, following Sunday's, Saturday's death, there was also a death of a man from San Jose, age 64, apparently by suicide, on the Caltrain tracks in Palo Alto on Sunday. We'll continue to work with Caltrain to explore any additional enhancements to track and train safety that can deter access to the tracks. It's indeed a sad weekend in our community. So with that, we have the discussion about whether to entertain a closed session having to do with Caltrain litigation. There is no staff report on this, so those councilmembers interested in either having or not having the closed session need to speak at this time, so I'll look for a show of lights. Whether we are or are not going to have a closed session having to do with Caltrain. And we, and we do have one member of the public, yes.
Go.
So, all right, Herb Borack and Adina Levin, you'll have three minutes apiece.
Mayor Holman and councilmembers, I believe it's appropriate for you to go into closed session to discuss what your options are. You have, from the staff, a copy of the comments you made on the draft environmental impact report. You don't have a copy presented to you of the responses to those comments that are included in the final environment impact report. In order for you to compare the two, you also have a paper trail that's been created in the past month regarding the paralleling Station Five, including correspondence between the city manager and a staff member of Caltrain saying, "Oh, please assure us that, you know, this is the most important thing we care about, and make sure before the deadline for filing a lawsuit that it's taken care of." It gives the impression that a decision's already been made by somebody without the council having made a collective decision either in public or in private as to what to do about all the other issues involved in the Caltrain final environmental impact report and its relation to the high-speed rail project. This will be the first time that this council has gone to closed session on Caltrain. And so the only things that have happened here before are that staff is presenting you with draft letters to comment on the draft EIR and the final EIR, which you then acted upon. So, and you did not have on your agenda an opportunity for the council either last year or this year to make a collective decision on what responses you would make to the final EIR. That was done in a letter from the mayor at the very end of the year, last year's mayor. So this is the first opportunity for the council as a whole to get together and to discuss all of the issues involved on whether or not to pursue litigation, and if so, on what causes of action. So I am frankly surprised, first, that you weren't given an opportunity, either the previous council in December or this council in January, to have this item on your agenda, to make comments on the final environment impact report. And I'm also frankly surprised to have a paper trail discussing one particular issue that you really have to get answered before the deadline for a lawsuit. It, it sort of looks to me, you know, if the man from Mars fell down, it looked like it's an attempt to preempt the council's freedom of action on what to do about a lawsuit. So I would request that you do and urge you to go into closed session and discuss all the issues, including any potential draft lawsuit from other attorneys. Thank you.
Adina Levin?
Good evening, councilmembers, and apologize for any loss of coherence at this hour. Adina Levin, friends of Caltrain. And with regard to the topic at hand, I was glad to hear in the last public meeting about the city council looking to work cooperatively with Caltrain on some of the outstanding issues. In this discussion, the topic of the city's transportation demand management strategies is something that's really critical to address traffic and parking challenges, is pretty widely acknowledged. And the city of Palo Alto depends on Caltrain electrification and then additional capacity improvements that build on electrification in order to be able to carry those passengers and get them out of cars. And delaying electrification is something that will harm the city of Palo Alto. It's true that there are traffic impacts at one of the intersections, it would, 90 seconds or so of delay without the project and an additional 20 seconds with the project. That does make matters worse, and grade separation is the thing that will help with that. However, that is highly costly, and litigating Caltrain is not something that will cause $500 million to a billion dollars to materialize. There are opportunities to work with the city of Mountain View, with other Santa Clara, and then with other partners on the Caltrain corridor to raise money for grade separations, and partnering to raise that money will be helpful. And litigating at this time is the thing that will make partnering in the region the most difficult to do. So if we want to raise the money to help do grade separations, litigation will take away from that. And finally, if the concern is traffic and level of service, then that's going to go away as a sequoia clause of action. So even if Caltrain stays under SEQA and the project is delayed for a year, or a year or two, they refile under the new rules and that clause of action goes away. So I would urge you, even though this is going to involve some pain for residents, the benefit is great and the opportunity to work cooperatively to, to raise the money is the better approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welbach?
I'd like to move that we go into closed session to discuss item number eight.
Second.
Would you care to speak to your motion?
I think it's, I think it's important that we go into closed session to discuss litigation matters.
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Vice Mayor Schmidt?
No.
I see no other lights. Vote on the board. So that motion passes eight-one with councilmember Niss voting no. So we will retire to closed session.